Would the clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite. Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Newsma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Saffordin.
Here.
Councilmember Revel.
Here.
With nine members present, we have a quorum and are prepared to do business. The first item on our agenda is mayor's public announcements and proclamations. I have no proclamations. I just want to say that this is, this is, there's a difficult issue that the whole city, our whole community and our city government are dealing with, that I think the public are owed a lot more answers that will be forthcoming over time. There is a tremendous amount of public comment this evening on a number of different issues, some of which are enormously difficult and sensitive, and it's going to be, I think, candidly, difficult to get through that in a way that is respectful of the topics that are being broached and equally respectful of the time of folks who are waiting to witness council action that occurs thereafter. So it's going to be a, I'm going to, it's going to be a difficult thing, and I'm going to simply ask people, many of whom have been generous enough to share comments in writing, to accept that we have no choice but to be quite limiting in terms of time that people give. I really, really appreciate the compassion and passion that this community has shown on this issue, which is going to be a necessary ingredient for us to effectuate the kind of solutions that our workers and our whole community deserve. So thank you for that. Next on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Thank you, Mayor Biss. I'm going to ask our corporation counsel, Nick Cummings, to introduce our new deputy city attorney, Michelle Ozeribo.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council, city manager storely, Nicholas Cummings, corporation counsel. I'm happy to introduce to you our newest addition to the law department, Michelle Ozeribo, or as she has affectionately said to my phone, is Michelle O. So now city of Evanston has its own Michelle O. And Michelle, if you would like to come up and introduce yourself to counsel and tell them a little about yourself.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Honorable Mayor Biss, city manager, city clerk, all of the members of the council. Thank you so much for having me. Just a little bit about myself. So I'm originally from Evanston. I grew up here, went to Lincolnwood Haven and ETHS. I've been practicing now for a little over 11 years. I'm a litigator by trade. I started off as a prosecutor at the Cook County State's Attorney's Office, and most recently, right before coming here, I did jury trials at the Chicago Transit Authority, then Chicago Public Schools, most recently Chicago State. So I'm grateful to be here, looking forward to working with all of you. So thank you so much for having me.
Welcome aboard, Michelle O. Glad to have you here.
Thank you. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you. Next item is communications from the city clerk.
I just want to acknowledge that we received quite a few public comment and writing. I'm not able to read out everyone's public comment, but a PDF copy will be attached to the minutes that will be approved on the next city council meeting. And I will go down the list. So Jennifer Meza asking for the city civic center to be reopened, Rob Bissambach in support of ordinance 73-0-21. The city council also has this in their email, if you want to look at it. The following people are requesting for the misconduct regarding the Evanston beaches, for there to be accountability from our city staff. Landon Taylor, Amy Landot, Malik Trulli, Elizabeth Feldman, Genevieve Pappas, Barbara Smith, Janine Marie Olson, Julie Chefsky, Froter Melissa Blunt, Jean Marie Fraze, Mary Loughlin, Terry Turner. And then I have the following people in support of resolution 70R21. The Canal Shore parking, Susan Magray Hendrick, Bill and Joanne Getzoff, Eileen Zeragood, Frances Friedman Patton, Sue and Howard Gartsman, Debbie Ardern, and then the following people who are not in favor. Those are eight people in favor, and then I have 30 names that are against. David and Meredith DeCarlo, Jerry Benon, Josh and Edna Plummer, Caroline and Jim Lett, Jane Hapson, Joanne Jenkins, Tim and Conny Weaver, Bill and Sue Quinlan, Andrew and Eileen Lennon, Sheila Safride, Erin, Jennifer Gregg, Michael and Deborah Greenberg, Mohammeda Reddy, Tom and Susan Magray, Sarah Slocombe, Bill and Fran Patton, Bob Andrus, and Janice Tracy, Jean O'Keefe, Mary Ann Latu, Kim Schaefer, Carol Crankard, and Steve Armstrong, Matt Nels, Jean Worth, Will and Joanne Getzoff, and Ryan and Bob Goldman, Carol Crankard and Steve Armstrong, sorry, I think that's repeated, and David and Meredith DeCarlo. I have two names requesting ARPA funding for childcare centers to help with their operations, Lindsay Percival and Betty Coons, and Evie Russell requesting for the air conditioning systems that create sound nuisance to well-met residents to be addressed from the Welsh Ryan Arena.
Thank you, Clerk Mendoza. And as you indicated, all of those comments will be in the minutes of this meeting, which will be in the packet circulated prior to the August 9th meeting. Additionally, I believe all, or almost all of these comments have already been sent to everyone in city council, so many of us have had the pleasure of reading them already. Thank you again to everyone for weighing in in this critical moment. We have, as I said, a very large number of people seeking to give public comments, so everyone is going to get a minute and 20 seconds. I'll give folks a warning after a minute, and then I'll announce time after 20 seconds. And this week, we're going to begin with those who are in person here in the civic center. And so the first person to give public comment is Tricia Connolly.
Ah, the benefits of being in person. Maybe we can get more people to come out. Good evening, my name is Tricia Connolly. First of all, I am just going to acknowledge and stand in solidarity with those people who have made very specific comments about the allegations at the lakefront. It is upon our elected leaders and the staff and city manager of this city to do something and to clean house. This has been over a year. We have to show everyone in this city and in this institution what we expect, so we're counting on you for that. The other reason I came here tonight is to speak about A12, ordinance 80O-21, authorizing the 2021 general obligation bond. I seem to remember campaign platforms around fiscal responsibility, and I'm here to remind you all what that means.
20 seconds.
You are all the representatives of all of us in Evanston. Why are we bonding $18,500,000 when the items presented should already be accounted in our current budget? This has the appearance of a way to create hidden reserves. I see that with the bonding, you're going to save $500,000 on interest. However, for this bond, we're talking about a tax levy down the road. Come on, folks, let's do better. Show financial fiscal responsibility, and let's get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Pardon me, thank you. The next speaker is Ray Friedman.
Good evening, everyone. Please do not approve the 18.5 million in GO bonds, as we have a budget crisis every year, and we're spending our money like it's growing on trees, and with very little, if any, discussion with residents concerning our budget, borrowing more money will just add to our financial burden that we cannot afford right now. How about cutting our expenditures instead of adding to them? We already owe approximately $2 million per month in debt service on approximately $200 million of general obligation bond debt. We also noticed that the last two council meetings, it appears that payroll has gone up by about $400,000 for each two-week period. Has payroll gone up by $800,000 per month? And how many employees do we have now? Last count was over 800. And lastly, please do not approve CM1, which is approval of the minutes for last council meeting, as we did not finish the TIF hearing as required by Illinois statute 65ILS 5-11-74.4. Okay. This is a terrible injustice to all Evanston residents by shutting down a public hearing, which is required, and turning it into public comment only, and leaving out the discussion as we were told, and only allowing two minutes each for us to speak. Hearing is, just one minute, please, is not just public comment, it's only part of it. But you decided to skip the most important part, the discussion.
Thank you.
Also, remember, the intent of public comment is to foster dialogue. That's the purpose and intent. Why can't we follow these guidelines as they're written? Why are you creating an environment of hostility instead of creating an environment where we can all work together and resolve issues before they come bigger issues? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Matt Rooney.
Good evening, I'm Matt Rooney. I'm the vice chairman of the board of Canal Shores. I'm here to speak in favor of items A8 and A9. As I hope you all know, Canal Shores is a not-for-profit that's been serving Evanston for over 100 years. We take care of 57 acres, the biggest amount of green space in the city, and we do it without any city revenues. These resolutions will enable us to get money that we need. We do not make enough money off of the parking, excuse me, off of golf to sustain the course, and this parking will help us fill a big hole in our revenues. We have a proven record of being able to do this. We've been doing it for years. We also are requesting in this resolution to have it expanded by two holes. We have a proven record of being able to do that well. There's been an expansion in the past on Hole 12, which some of the neighbors were unhappy about at the beginning. We've satisfied them as to how we run it. The same thing happened with regard to Hole 3. Again, we've had, we've showed people we can do this, so I ask you to take a vote in favor of these resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our in-person public comment. So now we begin our online public comment. Participants, beginning with Carrie Estrada.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carrie Estrada, and I'm the executive director at the Northwest Center Against Sexual Assault, or Northwest CASA. We are the rape crisis center serving Evanston community for many, many years. Some of the council members may recall us from our Walk a Mile event, where you've participated and worn the red high heels to show support of our sexual assault survivors. We thank you for your support. This is in regards to the lifeguard reports that had come out. So I just wanted to remind the council members, and if there are any survivors that are watching this, of the services that we provide. The bulk of our services is we are in the Evanston hospitals when a survivor presents themselves for a medical exam, to provide them all kinds of support as they go through that process. We provide legal advocacy. We are at ETHS yearly to provide prevention services. And I think most important to this one is we offer free trauma-informed counseling services to survivors of sexual assault.
20 seconds.
So we have been in the civic center for the past seven or eight years, and we are happy to provide that to anyone that is listening, or if the city is able to pass on our information. But even bigger than that is, we are happy to be a resource to the city as they're navigating victim-centered policies as well, because the city's response could have such long-term consequences when this stuff is not addressed adequately. So we're happy to be of service. We will be siding with the survivors, but to help navigate that and all the nuances that come with this, I just wanted to put this on the city council's radar again.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I just want to warn everyone, it's been, it's been made, I've been made aware that folks in the Zoom can't hear me unless I really speak up, so I'm going to, I'm going to be kind of loud in my, in my timekeeping, and I apologize that that may, that's not the tone that I would prefer to utilize, but I've been told it's necessary for me to be heard. But thank you very much, Mrs. Estrada, for your comment. The next, the next speaker will be Geeta Maker-Clark. Is Geeta Maker-Clark in the Zoom?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Biss. First of all, I would like to thank you, Mayor Biss, for making a strong statement about the way that this matter was mishandled and the emergent nature with which it should have been handled. While many people today will call for resignations and firings of the staff, and I do believe that that is part of what needs to happen as we address the incident itself, the incidents over the many years that they happened. I think we really need to look much more deeply at the environment that created the situation in which 56 employees of our city had to re-traumatize themselves to be able to come forth to speak about a culture that's been pervasive for years. And you may be familiar with the term rape culture, but rape culture is an environment in which rape is prevalent, and where sexual violence is normalized and excused. And unfortunately, the way that this matter was handled perpetuated rape culture in our city.
20 seconds.
Younger people are at a higher risk of sexual violence than any other people in the country. Statistics also show that offenders are more likely to choose victims who've been previously assaulted, and yet a woman is, who has had more than one assault, is much less, more likely to be negated and less likely to be believed. I'm a family physician at Northshore. Am I done?
Yes, and you're welcome to finish the sentence, but your time is up.
I'd just like to say, I'm a family physician at Northshore. I've worked in Evanston for the last 15 years. I've taken care of many young people who have been victims of sexual violence, and what I would ask is for there to be a public, strong, and swift apology to every one of the 56 people who came forth before we do anything further. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kelly Marcelle, who signed up for in-person, is not physically here. Is Kelly Marcelle in the Zoom?
She signed up twice.
And is she in the Zoom? All right, so Kelly Marcelle has already spoken in committee and perhaps signed up for counsel in error. The next speaker is Nick Korsanowski.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor Biss. I'll try to be as mindful of time as possible, or...
Good evening. I'm just here to say I support...
I'm sorry if I miss, Ms. Gartsman, you're coming up in a...
Holds 14 and 15. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Understood. So I, I'm sorry, just to clarify for everyone, including myself, who was confused, that was Ms. Marcelle, who was speaking in support of the item regarding Canal Shores. I'm sorry that we did not notice you in the Zoom earlier. And now we'll return to Mr. Korsanowski, whose time will be reset and is welcome to start again. Go ahead, Nick.
Well, thank you again. I'll, I'll be quick. I'm not going to be repeating what so many are going to say that we need tonight, but I think, you know, this, it doesn't, this is, this is as serious a thing as we're going to see. And I think it goes, you know, without saying, maybe, that the least we can do is 56 apologies and accountability, and that includes answering the question of, you know, who knew what, and when did they know it? And I just want to, I want to be very, very forceful in my advocacy there, that we take this way of seriously, top to bottom. We don't simply provide an apology and move on, something like that. And with that, I'll thank you for your time, and I'll end there.
Thank you, Mr. Korsanowski. The next speaker is Marie Schirmung.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, my video is disabled, but I am here. My name is Marie Schirmung, and I'm here tonight to ask you to vote no or to postpone the mention of the parking of Canal Shores to Holes 14 and, and 15. I became involved because I live across from Hole 14, and this proposal will dramatically impact our street. While being involved, my intent has never been to downplay the good things that happen at the course or devalue the volunteer efforts that so many people participate in. My husband bought a season pass to the golf course two years ago to support Canal Shores, and we've been volunteering with the neighborhood to remove buckthorn from the banks of the canal. Now Shores is, however, a golf course and is not a parking lot. Why should Evanston have to bear the burden of Northwestern Football fans parking? The university has plenty of land of its own. One week ago, we started a petition to voice our opinions against this proposal, and already half of the immediately affected blacks have signed. Clearly, this is a matter which needs more time in order to allow taxpaying residents' demands to be heard in the very...
20 seconds.
...some causes to protect our kids, our property, and our peace. Lastly, my 10-year-old was curious, my husband and I were chatting about a few weeks back. I asked her, what would you say if I told you that people want to park 400 cars on the land in front of our house? Her response, won't that ruin the golf course? It's disappointing to see that the very thing that is being touted as saving the golf course will in fact be tearing up the land, particularly when one of the three pillars of Canal Shores' mission and nonprofit status is land stewardship. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sue Gartsman.
Good evening. I started my video, but it seems disabled. Oh, here we go. So first of all, Kelly Marcelle is with me, and I'm not sure if it worked when she was speaking, but I just wanted to say that she is in favor of the parking, and as am I. We live at 2401 Jackson Avenue. We have lived here 15 years. We have a deck and my office that looks directly out on the golf course, and we basically monitor the entire situation on a daily basis, pretty much 24/7, and it's really a lovely, very active, even in COVID, became even more active. Many people came here from various areas, not just Evanston, and really got a sense of this whole beautiful green space. And we have a wonderful momentum going to help support this golf course that people seem to forget is a nonprofit that is always in dire straits. So we try and do everything we can to support it, both from a financial perspective and a volunteer perspective. And we want to support the parking for that reason, because they badly need the revenue. Also, in terms of the rhythm of the game days, it's, we've been here for 15 years, in and out, everything is very nice, it's very non-disruptive, and in fact, if it is disruptive at all, it's in a festive way. So we, we don't have any partiers, it's really just elderly alumni and families who are coming and parking their cars...
Thank you.
...and really want to get out of their cars, get over to the game, and then when they get back to their cars, they just want to get out of here as soon as possible. So there isn't really any disruption to the neighborhood, and in fact, it's quite wonderful meeting people from all over the country, basically, who are coming to these games.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for that. The, the next speaker is Paula Lang. Is Paula Lang in the Zoom? Looks like Paula's not there right now. We'll come back to, come back to them. Is Leslie Williams in the Zoom? Leslie Williams is next.
Yes, I am. I'm speaking about the harassment of the lifeguards. As someone who has worked as a supervisor in the city of Evanston, I'm baffled at how such outrageous behavior could have been allowed to go on unchecked for so long. Department heads and supervisors set the tone for their employees, and it's inexcusable that a department head would have failed to recognize this pattern of harassment and abuse and failed to stop it. So I'm asking the city council for a prompt and thorough investigation into the gut that occurred, for a publicly available report on the results, and for serious consequences, including terminations, for all supervisors, department heads, and administrators who fail to protect our young people. I also hope the city will take steps to mitigate the harm done by offering compassionate, trauma-informed care to the victims at the city's expense and with no strings attached. And I further expect that the city will work with our school districts and our many youth-focused nonprofits, such as the YMCA, the YWCA, Northwest CASA, the Moran Center, and Family Focus, to change this culture of misogyny, which allowed these crimes to happen in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kevin Brown.
Good evening, Mayor Biss, city council, and city clerk. I first want to offer my sincere empathy and support for the 56 people, along with Ms. Portia Davis, who have been traumatized by the alleged illegal and horrible behavior by City of Evanston Parks and Recreation staff, and overseen by what many would consider grossly negligent senior administration. The allegations you've recently been made aware of have been alleged for many years. Victims have been ignored, the alleged actors have been allowed to continue to commit more harm. I've given my life to working with young people and supporting young people, and it saddens me that young people have really suffered and will have lifetime scars because of negligent staff. It's unfortunate, it's taken the news report to get to where we are today.
20 seconds.
If there's one thing that has been brought to light as a result of these horrific allegations, it's that there is a culture of corruption, and an immoral culture amongst our administration at the city of Evanston. And this immoral and corrupt culture is going to continue without changes in senior leadership, beginning at the city manager level...
Time.
...on down. So without that level of accountability, staff will remain unsafe, the roots of corruption will grow deeper, and I'm just asking the city council and you, Mayor Biss, please restore the trust to our community by holding these people accountable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kathy Chukas. Is Kathy in the Zoom? Perhaps not. We'll come back to her. The next speaker is Elizabeth Feldman.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Bis, and City Council members, City Clerk. I recently retired as the medical director at Erie Family Health Center in Evanston, and I would like to offer you my 35-plus years of experience as a family physician and also my subspecialty experience in adolescent medicine. Here's what I think we can do to help our victims here. First of all, focus the process of the investigation on their needs, not just the 56 that signed the petition, but Ms. Davis and her colleagues. And we have to do it in a trauma-informed way, as I mentioned, to avoid further harming. I'm afraid that every day that goes on, that we don't offer a full apology to each of the 56 who signed the petition only adds to the trauma that we've already, they've already experienced. And I did speak with one of the council members today, and I understand that there's a theoretical concern that an apology might somehow imply guilt. But I will tell you, as a physician, we are trained to go ahead. If a mistake is made, if a medical malpractice potentially mistake is made, we are told that it is far better to acknowledge the mistake, to apologize thoroughly.
20 seconds.
And deeply, to listen carefully to the patient that was harmed, and then to fix it and make amends as quickly as possible. In fact, if we apologize quickly, the risk of lawsuit goes down. I think this is a yes and here for the council. Yes, you've already committed to doing a thorough investigation, which I appreciate. Let's also get that apology, which is what they've asked for, and the accountability right away, and not delay it and further harm to survivors. I want to make sure that we do did this with an intersectional lens, because a lot of the folks that signed the petition are experiencing not only gender discrimination, but racism and other isms that only compound the trauma that they've experienced. And finally, supervisory staff do need to be held accountable. Those of us who've been in positions of leadership know it's not just enough to respond to situations, which I don't feel was done appropriately in this situation. We need to be proactive and take steps immediately when we hear about things to both alert the people in charge and to make sure that things don't happen again. So failure to respond in a timely manner and failure to protect the safety of these young people needs to be, they need to be held accountable for that. Finally, I just want to say, we also need to say thank you to the current junior employees at the lakefront, who are working hard, day in, day out, to keep the beachfront safer for all of us, and are feeling shamed now and also traumatized by the whole situation. So let's not forget our other employees who've been trying to do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Betsy Wilson.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Bis. I would like to start out by apologizing. I'd like to apologize to Portia Davis and her colleagues, who told us two years ago in, on July 19th, 2000, July 16th, 2019, that there was a rampant problem of sexual harassment in the Parks Department. As far as I can tell, the city did nothing. There were no consequences and no remediation. And I'd like to apologize because it wasn't, I didn't act. It wasn't until the 56 young people at the beach, people who, as a population, look like my teenage white daughter, that I became outraged enough to stand up. And I'm sorry for that. I think that the implicit bias and the racism we see in this dichotomy demonstrates the need, like Liz mentioned, to address this problem with an intersectional lens.
20 seconds.
I'd also like to apologize to my daughter and her friends and the other young people in Evanston, because I have tolerated an environment in which girls can expect to have their butts slapped in the middle school hallways. Evanston teenagers can expect to be catcalled when they're hanging out in downtown Evanston, and employees of the city can expect their bosses, both on the beach and in the civic center, to comment on how they look in the bikini.
Time.
And I'm sorry that I and we, as a community, have let that go on for so long.
Thank you.
We need to do better. And we have failed the, the existing victims. As a result of that, there need to be consequences and severe consequences. And I'm going to say it directly. Erica Storley needs to be fired. Either, and I think this is the more likely scenario. She knew about the petition. She may or may not have seen it, but she knew that it existed. I believe that she was invited to meet with the young women who organized the petition. I also believe that she authorized the city's.
Thank you.
Statement made on July 16th, the first statement, July 16th, 2021, that was made without the approval of, apparently, of any elected official in the government.
Ms. Wilson, I'm going to have to cut you off here. I'm sorry. But thank you, thank you for your comment, and you, free to submit the rest of it in writing if you like. Thank you. The, the next speaker is Mike Vasilko.
Thank you, Mayor Bis. I stand in support of everything that Betsy and others just said. I couldn't say it better. I'm calling, I'm, for some reason, my camera is not going on. There it is. Okay. So just quickly, since time is short, the pie chart, this is regarding SP1, the pie chart that the city prepared for the ARPA discussion does not reflect what I heard in the one meeting I attended. People were asking for housing for the homeless, for affordable housing, and housing for battered women. And people were asking for internet infrastructure to the homes of those people who can't afford it, because the city apparently requires everybody to tune in to the website in order to get information about any of the issues in Evanston. So those two things, and they were steadfast against handing out funds to for-profit or wealthy not-for-profit organizations.
20 seconds.
Like developers and Northlake Theater. Just quickly on A12, why is Claire Kelly appointed, or why was she the only one, the only council member, to raise issues that were supposed to bring down the cost of the general obligation bonds?
Time.
I'm sorry, I got to finish this one sentence. The staff, Erica Storley, our CEO, CFO, sorry, they're responsible for these issues. They should be reviewed. The geo-bonds is full of errors and multi-grabbing of funds for staff that are already being paid to do other things. So that has to be held. That whole bond issue has to be held and diverted.
Thank you.
To the Finance and Budget Committee. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Melissa Monak. Is Melissa in the Zoom? Oh, I believe you are in the Zoom, Melissa. Can, if you can unmute yourself? Well, we'll, we'll come back to her as well. The next speaker is Genevieve Papas. We don't see Genevieve right now. The next speaker is Laura Beth Nielsen.
Hi, am I there yet?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, cool. Thanks for the opportunity to address you. My name is Laura Beth Nielsen. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a 22-year resident of Evanston. I'm also the chair of Northwestern University's Department of Sociology, a lawyer and author of two books about sexual harassment, one in public places and one in the workplace. My current research is about sexual harassment and assault at colleges and universities. Lots of folks have made great points, so I won't go over those again. And one thing that I'm really glad to hear is that people want to know, want there to be accountability. And you might be thinking to yourself, accountability for what? Okay, these things happen at the workplace. But I need to tell you, and these are all empirically generated, peer-reviewed social science data that I'm happy to provide the citations for. Women sexually assaulted and raped in this age group suffer elevated likelihoods of PTSD and depression. Almost one-third of sexual assault victims develop PTSD sometime during their lifetime, and more than one in 10 victims of assault still has PTSD at the present.
20 seconds.
30%. 20 seconds? Okay. They drop one full letter grade. They have a much higher dropout rate, and all of these are exacerbated for African-American and Latinx women. So when, the question is, what is it accountable for? It's accountable for these lifelong harms that impact wage disparity in systematic ways.
Time.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
There is an anonymous sexual assault hotline. It is one, this is the National Rain Hotline. And the Northwest Center Against Sexual Assault here in Evanston is 888-802-8890.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tasha Wilson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Good evening. I'm here on behalf of a great project called The OX, and also here to bring light to the project and how it aligns with the city's goals and set values in relation to the ARPA funding. I want to be clear about what The OX is. The name derives from auxiliary cord and our need to plug in to all aspects of our wellbeing. The OX is a community-owned commercial redevelopment dedicated to racial equity and wellness that uses real estate as a tool for racial equity and unblocks economic opportunity for Black entrepreneurs in Evanston. It's home to eight to 10 Black-owned businesses that will spark economic growth and create jobs, a vibrant space where all Evanston can assess wellness resources and come together as a community. It will be the home of the Laundry Cafe, Wellbeing Chicago, and Chef Q, and so many other businesses and recognized leaders that will bring life into the people and into our community. In this moment in time, The OX is crucial to Evanston's growth and sustainability with Black-owned business and maintain a solid footprint for Evanstonians that have built a strong legacy here.
20 seconds.
The OX will advance the goals of the American Rescue Act and the community's priorities with economic development, equitable recovery, health and wellness infrastructure. I am asking for your support and consideration in this unique time. We fully understand this money is being discussed in so many ways, but The OX is powerful, shovel-ready project that will change the narrative of what is possible for Black and Brown entrepreneurs in Evanston. We appreciate the city's support and consideration, and we will gladly take direction for all support, including ARPA and other revenues of support from the city. We are The OX, and it's time to plug in again.
Thank you.
To the heartbeat of this great community. Let's go beyond the wards and make this a collective city goal. Thanks for your time. Plug in.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jerry Brennan.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I want to acknowledge that the NU football parking issue pales next to the 56 victims of sexual harassment. And my daughter worked as a lifeguard on the lakefront from 2015 to 2018. Unfortunately, both issues are on the agenda at the same time. The majority of Evanston neighbors around the 14th and 15th golf holes object to expanding parking for up to 400 vehicles. This expansion would impact a much larger number of Evanston families compared to existing golf course parking. Our intent is to be helpful and support fair solutions to NU's football parking dilemma, not throw stones. Two points of basic fairness and neighborliness. Northwestern has been absent from Seventh Ward meetings on the issue, but it appears that, due to campus development the past few years, NU has eliminated the supply of on-campus football parking for up to 500 cars. If so, it appears Northwestern plans to shift their liability onto Evanston residents. Historically, NU shuttles fans from campus to Ryan Field.
20 seconds.
Number two, Willmet residents object to any football parking on their side of the golf course. Canal Shores seems to accept and respect their wishes, no questions asked. Evanston residents object to parking, and so far, Canal Shores said, too bad. We will overrule your objections and share benefits of your sacrifice with your new Willmet neighbors in the form of equal improvement to their side of the golf course.
Time.
And reducing football traffic and congestion on Willmet streets adjacent to the stadium.
Time.
This disparity risks creating resentment between friendly, cooperative neighbors and towns, which nobody wants. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Anne Burkett.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
You don't need to see me. I, this isn't working. I live directly across from the Lee Seat Beach. And last summer, for the very first time in all my years, we've lived here 65, almost 70 years in the house, I am complaining because I had two big food trucks packed for two weeks before. I found out that they were illegal, and the city removed them. But now they're going back, and although they're not considering food trucks, but smaller looking things that are commercial. And I, years ago, they've gone through this a number of times. People want the lakefront to be left natural and not be commercial. And it changes the ambiance of the whole place to have that. People are up in the sunrise each morning, watching the sun come in, down. And from there on in, people are out running, and even more now, because people have been so homebound.
20 seconds.
But to have the others, it's such a mess, and I'm tired of cleaning it up. People who bring their things, take them home, their food. And I don't see that that needs to change. They've tried it before. And thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Takel Fonda.
Mute. I can't start it.
Yeah, we, we can hear you, Takel.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. Thank you. When I read the mayor's public statement about the timeframe of his knowing about this explosive petition on June 19th and taking it to staff immediately, then more than three weeks later, never receiving a response until the BEZ report story was released, I'm left wondering if the WBEZ story hadn't aired on July 16th, when would they have responded? That level of arrogance, disrespect, and sense of absolute power by top-level staff is astounding. In this democratic republic of Evanston, we elected all of you to represent us, not the unelected staff who have clearly misused and abused their power. I am hopeful that you will find your way forward to make some very deep changes at the very top levels of the city administration who are responsible for this travesty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sarah Best Warren. Is Sarah Best Warren in the Zoom?
Yes, hello. Thanks so much. I'm sorry for the delay.
Not at all.
I'm here to speak about the sexual assault, many sexual assaults and sexual manipulations that have happened in our community. I speak as a woman, as a former lifeguard, as a professional who's worked in domestic violence prevention, sexual assault prevention, Title IX roles, and primarily as a community member and restorative justice practitioner. I, I agree with those who have advocated for a swift apology and concur with Liz Feldman that apologies generally mitigate lawsuits rather than create them. I believe that it is clear that there is harm done, and there is no reason why we ought not apologize as a community to mitigate further harm. But I am here to advocate for the reality that apology is the absolute bare minimum, and it is so sad that our children think that that's all that they can come to expect from the adults who are supposed to protect them. It's tempting in situations like these to do what one community member said, in terms of cleaning house, and to issue a flowery apology, fire a bunch of people, and call it a day. But this is not accountability, and this is not what our children deserve.
20 seconds.
We need to rally around these victims truly, to censure their needs, the needs of the victims, the needs of the most vulnerable. And also to take true accountability as a community, that would require a much larger-scale accountability process. And so I would advocate for a community restorative process in which multiple community members, both individuals who are harmed, individuals who are responsible. both individuals who are harmed, individuals who are responsible for the harm, which is all of us, work together to identify restorative solutions that
Time.
...that can heal the harm that's so insubordinate. I would point many, many organizations, homegrown organizations in our community that can support such a process, specifically the Moran Center that has quite a track record for working with young people in restorative processes. I beg of all of the good grownups in this room, this is our job to protect our kids, and let's not be wishy-washy when it comes to a robust communal response. Thanks so much for allowing me to address the council.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kathy Morris Hoffer.
Hello, thank you. My name is Ketha Morris Hoffer. I'm a resident of Ward 2 and the mother of a young man who just graduated from EGHs and was hired for the first time to work as an Evanston lifeguard. I am also an attorney and the ED at Chicago Alliance Against Sexual Exploitation, a nonprofit that seeks to end sexual harm through policy reform, prevention education with high school-aged youth, and free legal services to anyone living in Cook County who has endured sexual violation. I am deeply grateful to the young women whose bravery has inspired tonight's dialogue, and I urge you not to fall into the trap of looking for monsters or scapegoats. Outrage about sexual harm is a critical thing and good, but while the problem at Evanston beaches is real and urgent, it is far from unique, and addressing it should only be an opening salvo in greater efforts to see, prevent, and respond to sexual violation, which disproportionately lands not just on cis girls and women, but BIPOC communities, members of the LGBTQ community, and others who are members of socially and economically disadvantaged groups.
20 seconds.
One of the young women quoted in the WBEZ report said that she had to go through mandatory sexual assault and harassment training when she entered college in order to realize that she had been raped. That she didn't immediately label what she experienced as rape is incredibly normal, largely because most sexual harm is engaged in by men who spend most of their time not raping or engaging in sex harassment. In my 30 years of experience, most men who engage in sexual harm don't think of what they're doing as abuse. They think because they don't have guns or jump out of bushes, that they're just acting like regular guys.
Thank you.
It's entirely possible that the men in Evanston who engaged in raping and harassing their beach colleagues had no idea about the harm they caused until WBEZ broke the story it did. I realize I've come to the end of my time, but I want to urge everyone to recognize that the woman who was, I quoted previously, said specifically that she was not looking for vengeance, she just wanted it not to happen again. That is the single most common sentiment that I have ever heard uttered by survivors. They need us to attend to fixing things, not to creating a vengeance.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Malik Turley.
Thank you. Fifty-six women and girls gathered the strength and courage to share their experiences of violence at the hand of city employees, and what happened? They were harmed again. I wish I were shocked that the violence happened in the first place, but I'm not. As the founder and executive director of Hip Circle Empowerment Center, I've spent the last decade working with women and girls in hopes of helping them to tap into their strength and to know their worth because I know violence against women is common, pervasive, and something anyone socializes as a woman is likely to need to navigate. So no, I'm not shocked that the violence happened. I am shocked that their experiences were ignored, and I'm hoping that finally you will listen, act, and create the change necessary to keep this from happening again. Restore my faith in Evanston. Protect the women and girls working at the lakefront and throughout the city of Evanston. Make changes that show that you stand for women and girls and against sexual violence. Be decisive in your actions
20 seconds.
...and send a message that moving forward, Evanston supports its citizens, not rape culture. And apologize. Apologize to the women and girls who were harmed directly. Apologize to all the women employed by the city of Evanston who have discovered their employer is unsafe. Apologize to every woman and girl in Evanston who's watching right now, wondering if it's even possible to feel safe in this town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is David Reynolds. Is David in the Zoom? Looks like he is. Are you there, David?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. The Lakefront Master Plan adopted in 2008 remains the valid planning document for our lakefront. It was the result of countless citizen meetings throughout Evanston. It reflects the views and desires of our community, one of which is that the lakefront remain passive and non-commercial. If we are to make changes at the lakefront, they should not be done by fiat by the council. They should be done with a thorough vetting by the community. Neither food push carts nor non-residential paid parking will enhance our lakefront. In fact, they will diminish its appeal. We have in place food services at most beaches and the Lagoon Building, provided by a family that has served us well for many years. It's our understanding that because of COVID, they have not been able to operate this summer or last. If they are put in a position of having to compete with push carts, neither will likely make a profit. Food carts may siphon business from our downtown food providers as well. As an apparent lead-in to charging everyone to park at the lakefront, we believe
20 seconds.
...residents will be financially unsuccessful and will certainly send an unfriendly message to those from out of town who use our lakefront parks. For the simple reason that our lakefront parks are surrounded by neighborhoods with ample free parking, getting people to pay the highest non-special event parking prices in town seems very unlikely.
Time.
It is doubtful that collections will exceed the cost of enforcement, let alone the unrecoverable capital costs. It makes no sense to open beaches and charge for parking. The proposals will ultimately benefit no one. Let us follow the Lakefront Master Plan and preclude commercialization. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Doreen Price. Is Doreen Price?
Hello. Yes, I just got to you.
Go ahead.
I got to, I'm muted. Thank you. Thank you for the privilege of speaking tonight. There are a lot of issues that have to deal with our culture, and we're trying to make decisions about budgets and money that's coming from the federal government. I think it demonstrates that we're not in a very good position right now until we understand who we are as a community. And this represents something that is very troubling to all of us, and really, really questions who we really are, and to make sure we make good decisions moving forward. So in response to that, and looking at it from another angle, has to do with health and human services. So for SP1, we need to look at priorities, current climate, which I just discussed, or everyone else has been discussing, equity, social justice, health and well-being. Definitely well-being, as we know about these young women, that that has been taken from them, and that needs to be restored for sure.
20 seconds.
Every woman myself, I understand what that means. Tonight's public comments are important to celebrate. The right thing to do, and that's what residents, how residents who deeply cared helped all residents, and that had to do with the Parkway plantings. An excessively harsh and punitive Parkway plantings ordinance proposal would have cost far more than had gained. This is going back to the gentleman who just spoke and said, "Make sure of our cost." In the face of Evanston's nation's worsening income inequality, why are huge fines relative to income to force repeated trauma compliance that is not universally enforced?
Thank you.
Why can we depend on regressive and punitive revenue generation and request ARPA to balance the city of Evanston budget if it truly costs Evanston much more to not address social and economic inequalities?
Thank you.
And again, abuses that occur from that kind of environment? Or not increase health and human services to serve needs that are known but not addressed? Again, what we're seeing right now. Dependency on overwhelmed charities before, during, and post-COVID makes Evanston a burden if needs are far greater
Thank you, Ms. Price.
Than, yes, than just a little
The next speaker is Linda Del Bosque. Is Linda in the Zoom?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
All right. Can you hear me? There you are. Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor Bis, for creating a safe space to have this conversation and voices of support from locals regarding the current situation. I think I'd like to thank Northwest CASA for being on Zoom with us this evening to show that their services are important. Those are the type of organizations that we need to plug into, and that's something I discussed at the ARPA meeting, one of the three meetings. Whenever something happened with my daughter with human trafficking a couple of weeks ago here in Evanston at the E2 Apartments, the officers didn't give us any resources. So I'm having to seek resources, and according to Sergeant Williams, it was, "Oh, well, I'm sure you've got the financial resources to help her." CASA, nothing was plugged in. Number two, looking at SP1, oh, before I go to SP1, as a survivor myself, I just want to extend my solidarity to all 56 women and their position and then, or whoever was part of this. I'm hoping that the city of Evanston puts something in place so we will not be in this space any longer.
20 seconds.
20 seconds. SP1, as we go into discussion, remember we've got digital services that we need to plug into, the $5.5 million, sorry for the email, it was voicing the ones I sent to you and the other council members. Before this, the economics department, we need to unpack to see where that money is going to. We've got wards 8, 5, and 2 that have no SSAs and that need financial support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Julia Shouaf. Is Julia in the Zoom? Not sure we see her. We'll come back. The next speaker is Evie Russell.
Can you see me?
Not yet. Oh, there we are.
Okay. NU's expansion in the U2 district has been at the cost of reduced parking and increased negative impact on surrounding neighborhoods. Code requires 4,713 parking spaces for stadium events. Why NU isn't held to city code is not my point now. NU has devised methods to find parking in the community rather than on their property at very little cost to themselves and under the guise of being charitable. In 2019, Mr. Davis stated that NU did not intend to expand beyond the hole that they were asking for event parking. That argument helped them get in council approval. Now NU wants more golf course space for parking and tailgating. In exchange for measly golf course parking revenue, revenue that maybe COVID funds or some charitable drive could raise, NU would further expand beyond the U2 district itself. Three neighborhoods are negatively impacted by NU's expansion. One, Evanston neighborhoods around the U2. Two, Willmet neighbors subjected since 2018 to Welsh Ryan Arenas chillers noise.
20 seconds.
Number three, residents near the golf course. Other entities ride on the coattails of entertainment at any cost, such as Post 42, encouraged by out-of-space precedent to rock and roll at the expense of the Cisilla residents. Silence is golden. I'll be silent now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sebastian Nalls.
Good evening, Mayor Bis. Good evening, City Council. I'm here today to talk about the sexual misconduct that was present at the Evanston lakefront. When the WBEZ article regarding sexual assault and harassment of Evanston lifeguards was published, I myself felt a mixture of dismay, sadness, and anger, quite frankly. Allegations were made originally in 2020, and city staff failed to act and fulfill the demands made by the lifeguards in their petition, and they even rehired one of the individuals who was at the root of this entire ordeal. The subsequent lack of urgency by city staff, as stated by yourself, Mayor Bis, in your press release, is quite frankly horrifying. We saw a council member back in early 20, I believe it was 18, 2019, jump to the aid of a city employee in response of an allegation, a sexual assault allegation that ended up being unfounded, but now they remain quiet, just as they did when Portia Davis made allegations against the Parks and Recreation Department.
20 seconds.
Faces a deep-seated work culture present in the city of Evanston that allows for this behavior to take place. The Evanston Parks and Recreation Department has now had multiple sexual assault and harassment allegations, which in any profession would result in the entire overhaul of the department. Toxic masculinity is running rampant with older employees, teaching young men that this behavior is acceptable, triggering and dicting city staff and others in Evanston. I'm glad that the city council pushed for an independent investigation. However, to say that residents are hopeful that there will be consequences to those involved is an overstatement.
Thank you.
Any individuals who perpetrated the behavior or allowed it to continue should be terminated without regard. The people of Evanston value the well-being
Thank you.
...of our youth greater than we do any personal relationships between city staff. We do not want a token sacrifice. We want justice for the brave individuals who had the courage to come forward and bring these atrocities to light. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speakers are David and Meredith DeCarlo. Is David and/or Meredith in the Zoom? Looks like maybe not. So then we'll move on to the next speaker, who is Ally Harned.
Hi, can you hear me? Wait.
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me? Can you see me? Sorry, I had to pull over really quick.
Thank you for not driving.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I am going to read Jean Marie Friesey's comment, because she was not able to be at the meeting. Having learned of the petition signed by nearly 50 lakefront employees notifying staff and higher-ups of an unsafe working environment, where a culture of sexism, bigotry, and racism festered, has disturbed and horrified me to no end. But beyond that, the idea that something of this magnitude was not met with swift and meaningful action is unconscionable. The survivors and brave young people who spoke out to alert their superiors of this toxic work conditions deserve to be taken seriously, deserve to be met with empathy and understanding, deserve action, and deserve justice. The inaction of people who were alerted of this position is inexcusable and grounds for termination. The lakefront is our lakefront manned by our children, and the failure of folks in leadership positions to meet the situation with the seriousness it deserves speaks volumes. This is Evanston's Me Too moment, and our current leaders are now tasked with studying a precedent. Do your job. That's from Jean Marie Friesey. And Ally Harned, from the Second Ward, would like to say, I want to echo
20 seconds.
...the statements made tonight about the egregious offenses at the lakefront, and want to make sure you know that there are a number of people who wanted to speak in support but were too triggered and traumatized to do it. Sexual harassment, sexual abuse, sexual violence has lifelong effects. We are paying attention. We want to know that we are paying attention to what staff and elected officials do, as well as what you don't do, to what you say, as well as what you don't say, to how much you complain about the length of meetings that you signed up for. If you don't want to be in the position you ran for, you can step down. There are lots of people willing to leave in Evanston. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. That's the end of our list, so I'm going to loop back to everyone who was called on and didn't speak at the time. So let me name those. That would be Paula Lang, Kathy Chukas, Melissa Manock, Genevieve Papas, Julia Shouaf, and David and Meredith DeCarlo. Are any of those individuals in the Zoom at all? Okay, I'll call through one more time. Paula Lang, Kathy Chukas, Melissa Manock, Genevieve Papas, Julia Shouaf, and David and Meredith DeCarlo. Thanks to all those who commented. If any of those who I called on are not speaking because of a technical issue, please do submit your comments in writing, and they will be both available to the public and shared with the city council. That concludes our public comment this evening and brings us to the next item on the agenda under Special Orders of Business, discussion of an American Rescue Plan Act funding process. To facilitate discussion, I would entertain a motion on the subject.
So moved.
Sorry.
Second.
Councilmember Braithwaite moves that we discuss the ARPA funding process. Councilmember Newsma seconds, and I'm going to hand the mic over to City Manager Erica Storley.
Thank you, Mayor Bis. So as you know,
Thank you, Mayor Bis. So as you know, earlier this past month, we conducted three public meetings to obtain feedback from the community about funding priorities for the historic ARPA funding that the city has received. We conducted one of those meetings in Spanish, one of those meetings virtually, and one of those meetings in person at the Robert Crown Center. Staff culminated that feedback into the document attached to the packet this evening. So if you've had a chance to review that feedback, we ended up taking the feedback from that, as well as the feedback that was provided by council and other community members via other channels, and we pulled it together into the proposal that we will be sharing with you this evening and that we hope to get your feedback on. And could you go to the next slide, please? All right. So based on that feedback, we created these six categories. So everybody is obviously aware of economic development. That is a high need and one of the needs that we think should be, should proceed first because of its critical nature. Also, social services. So we've allocated a proposal of 5.5 million for economic development, 3 million for social services. City finances and infrastructure is the largest pot of money that we're proposing with 22 million. Then we have an inclusive and equitable recovery, which Sarah Flax is going to detail tonight, at 6 million. Participatory budgeting at 2.5 million. And then we're proposing to hold back a little over $4 million for future unmet needs and for any potential additional mitigations that the community may need as we go into this fall with the uncertainty around the new variants. Next slide, please. All right. So the economic development bucket, we've heard from some of the business districts around downtown Evanston and Main Dempster Mile and others about their needs through the Economic Development Committee presentations that have been held over the past couple of months. So we have a rough idea of what the desired need is for that funding. So we've targeted 5.5 million for this effort. Obviously, there is a large demand for this kind of funding and a diverse set of needs, but it could be anything that would spur economic growth. The recovery of our business community from Central Street all the way to Howard Street is absolutely critical for our long-term success as a community and for supporting revenue and job creation citywide. So this is something that we would entertain proposals for potentially that would be an open process. We envision that there would be a set of criteria and a funding deadline for submission of a proposal, an application that would be simple for anybody to fill out, and that once the submission had passed, staff would score these proposals on a set of criteria that was informed by the Economic Development Committee. So if it was determined by the committee that, you know, return on investment or workforce development or anyone, any criteria was, you know, sort of more valued than other criteria when staff scoring the proposals, we would do a matrix to weigh those options accordingly. And once the submission deadline had passed and all of the proposals were scored, those would then all be presented to the Economic Development Committee, who would then be charged with determining which proposals to fund. Once that process was complete, these proposals would then ultimately go to city council for approval. This process we're proposing would happen very soon, as this is one of, like I said, the areas where we feel like we should move with swift speed. So this would potentially, if there's general consensus to proceed with this proposal, I would imagine starting mid-August to early September. Similarly, with the social services funding, we're proposing an identical process. There would be an open call for submissions. Anybody could apply. The newly formed Social Services Committee would receive these proposals once they've been scored and vetted by staff to ensure that they comply with the guidelines of ARPA. And then those proposals that were selected to be funded would be forwarded to the city council for final approval. There's a lot of high need in this area as well, and there's a lot of speed with which we need to address these issues. So this is also being proposed to happen in parallel with the Economic Development Committee funding, which would also be that same mid-August to early September timeline of starting this and also using parameters that were informed by the priorities of the Social Services Committee. So that would identify where we would be weighing those specific goal areas into the funding process. Did you want to take questions at the end or at the beginning?
At the end.
Okay. Next slide. Okay. So city finances and infrastructure, a lot of what is contained in this area is directly related to the loss of revenue. So any loss of revenue, we can take and directly claim against certain portions of the funding, and it gives us a little bit more flexibility in how we spend that funding. Any money outside of direct revenue loss has to be utilized in a specific way. Excuse me. We're proposing that there's going to be approximately $10 million of general revenue loss for the general fund and then $4 million in the parking fund. So there's going to be a little bit more flexibility in a certain allocation of this overall proposed amount of 22 million. But obviously, like we've talked about before, lead service pipe replacement, water and sewer repairs, administrative costs, hazard pay, those are all things that we would be coming forward to the city council to recommend. And our proposal for how we would recommend allocating this specific portion would be direct recommendations from staff to city council, obviously because this is the largest piece. We have to have a little bit more time to fully vet out and develop what exactly the recommendations will be, but we do have some that we've prioritized, which are listed on this slide. $3 million for water projects for current year, $950,000 for parking projects for current year. If we did go forward with using ARPA money for those funds, then we wouldn't have to borrow for those. So that's a decision that we will be coming forward to the city council with at our next meeting. If that was not the direction that the city council wanted to go, then we would have to look at other funding sources for that, such as either borrowing for that or, excuse me, increasing water rates or parking rates, which is definitely not something that we would recommend. We also have $300,000 match for the Guaranteed Basic Income Program, which we're going to propose at our next meeting. We'll be talking about what that program is that was funded this year by the Northwestern Good Neighbor Fund. And in order to complete a successful pilot of that program, we would like to add additional funds to it. And then we also have $100,000 proposed for development of the CARP implementation plan. So all four of those recommendations will be coming to the city council for review at our next meeting in April, I'm sorry, in August. But a more fully developed plan from staff for a portion of this will also come to council later this fall, which would also include hazard pay for staff, which we've talked about as, as the council has identified as one of the priorities. We agree with that priority. We're trying to identify how exactly to implement that amongst staff, who's eligible, who's not eligible, and what kind of fair system we could employ to make sure that staff was able to receive that hazard pay in an equitable manner. Now I'm going to ask Sarah Flax to go over the bucket of inclusive and equitable recovery.
Thank you. This is really not a different category from all the others. What it is is focusing in certain geographic areas. One of the things that the Recovery, the Rescue Act recommends that recipients consider is really focusing on geographic areas of greatest need that have historically been under-invested and lack the resilience of some of our other parts of our community. There's one very clear geographic part of Evanston, which is census tract. I know I always talk in census tracts, 8092. It's the heart of the 5th Ward. It was our, one of our NSP2 census tracts, but historically has some of our worst health outcomes and other things in addition to having a substantially low-income population. It is a qualified census tract, which is a HUD term for census tracts where a, over half of the population lives at an income less than 60% of the area median. And so these are, this is an area that they define as if you do all these things focused in this area, we're not going to question, are you doing the right thing? That's, that's how they have, one of the geographic ways that they've defined. What this also does, we know we need housing. We need affordable housing. Qualified census tracts are prioritized for low-income housing tax credits, for example. So if you are building that kind of housing in that kind of census tract, you, we're going to be much more competitive for it. We already know, and this ties into CARP, that we, because we were working with the Partners for Places to try to figure out how to make our lower-income housing more resilient and energy efficient. And I believe that there are ways that we can pull together different funding. Because we're doing this kind of focused approach, I'm not going to try to go into all the descriptions, because I think there are a lot of them, but what it really is, is looking at the community, engaging the community members in their needs and what they want focused on, and working out a plan to try to do that. And I, I think it's sort of the next step from NSP2, where we really were trying to keep the housing from falling into further disrepair. This is the next step. We need to build the neighborhood and some of our areas in a much more focused way than we have.
Thank you, Sarah. So we're still working on developing exactly how that process would roll out, but we felt it important to go over the big picture as it relates to this category of what we're proposing for the funding allocation. And as Sarah alluded to, there could be things like housing rehabilitation, creation of affordable housing units, perhaps expansion of Emerson Square, all of those things that are included in this particular category. But as we further refine how we'll look at this category and as we identify what additional funding sources may complement this funding so that we can leverage it to its greatest degree, we'll be returning to the council with recommendations. So the fifth proposed category is participatory budgeting. This has been communicated as something that's been definitely a need, that we want to have our community members directly allocate a certain portion of this fund. We're proposing that this category of funding start potentially next spring after we've completed the economic development funding and the social services funding. If there were proposals that didn't get selected for funding in those initial rounds, those proposals could also be a candidate for participatory budgeting. So sort of a second chance. There's definitely going to be very good proposals that are going to come forward that aren't going to get funded in those social services and economic development categories, because simply the great, there is greater need than there is available funding. So this would be an opportunity for those projects to potentially receive funding through direct community support. If we were to go forward with this as proposed, we would want to work with an outside vendor to conduct this for us, using input from the council and community as to how we would like to see our participatory budgeting process go forward. And lastly, as I discussed in the earlier slide, we're proposing to hold back this a little over $4 million. There may be some projects that we propose or move forward with that ultimately get rejected potentially by the federal government as not potentially meeting the targeted nature of this funds. We're going to do everything we can to make sure that all the projects that would get funded do that, but we never know until we submit these things whether or not they meet the criteria that the federal government has outlined. So if we hold back a little of this funds, we can potentially fill in other projects and also meet those unmet needs that after we've put out the initial funds, if there's still areas where we feel like there hasn't been enough support, we can come back and support that. So this would be something that we'd be discussing with the council next summer potentially. So that was sort of the big picture, broad brush strokes. Curious to hear feedback from the council on whether or not this makes sense to you, if you have thoughts on the funding as we've allocated it, and if you have any other suggestions for how we move forward.
Thank you very much. The first three council members to speak will be council members Braithwaite, Reed, and Fleming, followed by Nusma. So let's begin with Councilmember Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So can we flip back quickly to the social services slide? So quick question before this, we had a slide for economic development. I'm assuming that would be economic development for social services. Can I assume that that's going to be Human Services Committee, or are you suggesting creating a whole new committee outside of Human Services?
The council recently consolidated a couple of committees to create the Social Services Committee. So that committee is just getting members appointed to it, and will have like sort of its first meeting in the next month, I believe. So that's what we're proposing would go to this.
I must have missed a meeting. Okay, I said I must have missed a meeting. And then the second question is on the city finances slide.
One thing I forgot to mention about the city finances and infrastructure slide is that, because even though it just has these two listed, there may be proposals that come forward that cross over into other categories. So it wouldn't be limited just to these things. This is sort of the bigger picture, more flexibility bucket.
So I can't, I'm thinking something, and it may not come out correctly, but so for example, if we have $950,000 in the, of water projects, those would be projects that are already in our CIP plan, correct?
Correct.
And so if they're in our CIP plan, that means we've planned these like years ago, so we don't have to worry about competing for outside projects other than those, correct?
Yes.
Theoretically. I mean, we still have some flexibility. So then at some point, since we're no longer having to bond or spend money for those projects out of our capital fund, we should be able to project some type of savings.
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up, because I forget to mention that as well. Last week or last meeting, when we were discussing in APW Committee, the bond issue, I brought up how if we move forward with recommendations from staff to utilize a lot of this city finances infrastructure bucket to pay directly for capital costs for 2022, we may not have to do any bond issuance at all for next year, which would dramatically decrease the amount of debt service that we would be obligated to pay and thereby reduce the overall debt load of the city.
Which could potentially, well, we don't know about potentially reducing taxes, but we can definitely foresee that there wouldn't be a need for a tax increase, number one. And then it gives us the ability to shore up dollars, because whereas these dollars are restricted, the monies that we save can be redirected, whether it's to pensions or other long-term debt to reduce. I don't want to get into the solving.
I said it better myself.
Okay, thank you. It's exciting. And then the last, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember Reed.
I'm going to let Councilmember Fleming go before me, if that's fine.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. So for the overall breakdown, you know, I know it says in here that staffs can work with the nonprofit community regarding how to access some other funds, but, you know, the last year I sat on the, where I attended the nonprofit meetings that were part of the mayor's COVID task force, and I can tell you that, you know, there were lots of needs, there were lots of concerns about the city's support or not support, and their conversation has quickly turned to how they could access the ARPA funds. So in looking at this number, while it looks, you know, big in theory, I, I'm sure there's going to be some concerns, because I know people had kind of big requests in mind. And so I, I would love to see kind of a little more evening out between economic development and social services. I don't know, you know, having read the ARPA package some time ago, I don't know if it gives suggested percentages of how monies are spent, but, you know, I don't know. I would like to see this evened out a little more, particularly given how quickly our social service agencies kind of jumped, well, not all, but some of them jumped into action to help the citizens during the pandemic. And particularly, you know, when I think about our childcare providers, a lot of them stayed open or opened up when schools were closed, so people could still go to work. So I would love to see us tweak that number a little more, even maybe looking at moving some infrastructure money to social services or something, another. The other question I had is about the inclusive and equitable recovery. While I understand the census tract and that there's a need there, is a suggestion that $6 million would just go into one census tract?
No, that's not the suggestion.
Okay. So that census tract funding would be part of the overall 6 million. And so assuming, using whatever kind of equitable lens we're using, that money would be spread all over, for residents all over the city?
The concept generally is that if you're utilizing the money to target an area that has been harder hit than others, then there is going to be additional funds that are going to be available to leverage the funds that you invest. How you define that is categor- How you define that is categorized by a number of things, not just census tract. So, if we, there may be a social service need that is identified, that is not related to a census tract, that would qualify under inclusive and equitable recovery. So, I guess when you think about the social services category, you could also think about this, this category as well. So, there's, you know, potentially $9 million for social services.
Okay, so was there, and maybe this is for next week, but was there a thought in terms of how much of the $6 million would go into census tract versus, how much would kind of go to any other kind of catch-all that would meet this goal?
When staff was looking at the funding allocations at the outset, the, the couple of things that went into the, the process for making these initial recommendations was twofold. One is the, the funding, the act is, you know, is a very, very large financial package, only one piece of which was direct aid for cities. A larger portion of it was actually aid directly for nonprofits and other social service entities. So, like, like you said, there is that other funding that's available. So, we don't want to duplicate funding that's available in other sources. We want to help the community leverage those other sources, and then have, help us, have us come in to supplement that. So, but that, also the holding back, if we identify in a year from now that our social service agencies weren't successful in getting that other funding, we've got that other $4 million that we can potentially put towards that, which could potentially make the social services bucket be $7 million instead of $3 million. So, that's why the, the thought was, let's start with $3 million, which is a good start, see how we go, and then if we need to supplement, we could do that.
Okay, and then my only last question, and I don't know, I'm on page 14 in the packet. I don't know if this was a cut and paste directly off of what ARPA lays out in terms of, you know, support, I don't know if this was under census tract, or however they have it laid out in ARPA. I would just tell you personally, the sentence here about childcare, home visiting programs to provide access to training on child development and positive parenting, I would just put out there for me, is a little bit offensive. I think when we look at, you know, particularly we talked about with some of the language that was in the TIP thing about welfare to work and things, we still operate under this language that acts like poor or minority parents don't know how to parent because they're poor, and really talks about things from a deficit model. So, if we're talking about childcare services or home visiting programs, I think those are great, when we start talking about using money that's going to, again, maybe this is the ARPA language, but that's going to train people on how to positive parent, I think that comes from a very kind of missionary motto for me. So, I would just throw that out there. If it's our language, I would like to be removed. If it is the ARPA language and we have to use it, then so be it.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed, do you want to go now? Go ahead.
Well, I'm glad I let Alden, Councilmember Fleming go first, because I'll just echo that I believe the social service funding should be higher, and as Councilmember Fleming pointed out, more on par with economic development funding, that was my first note, as well as, I also agree that I think we should move some of that funding from the infrastructure and, and city finance pot as well. I was also going to mention the census tract thing, just going to mention that there are eighth ward census tracts that I believe also qualify, and so I'm hoping that we're looking at though, particularly that the one eighth ward census tract that was also designated for the NSP $2, I'm sure, last time I looked at the census tract, I think it would still qualify, so, I want to be thinking about the eighth ward as well. And particularly, this may be for the Social Services Committee, or whatever committee, but I, I do think particularly as evictions have started again, and we don't have, there are some great programs for renters at the state level, the I, Illinois Department of, not IDA, it's IDHA, I think?
Yeah, Illinois Department of Housing and Illinois Government Services.
Yeah, yeah. So, that, there's some great programs available for renters, but there are some complications with a, a number of those programs, and particularly with accessibility and just awareness of those programs, so I wonder if we should, one, specifically create a fund here. Currently, I know the IDHA program would, does not allow landlords to apply for, for that funding, and so if, maybe we could create a local program, and I think it would be worth separately just looking at an eviction moratorium for folks who would be evicted purely for financial reasons. If there's other reasons to evict, you can move forward, but if it's financial, I think we should very quickly move on this, as people are being evicted now. And so, I'm hoping that both, that the social service aspect will be pretty fast-tracked as well, especially as the committee is getting up and running.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just kind of run through my list in order, and hopefully I can get this in under my time limit. In general, I think we're on the right track here, so I'm encouraged that we're making progress. I think we have some tweaking to do. Looking at the pie chart and how the slices of the pie are allocated, I will have to point out that based on my pennies in the mason jar exercise, hardly unscientific, but the residents of the fourth ward who participated in my ward meeting last month came up with a different conclusion and put 45% of the ARPA funding into economic development, 32% into social services, and combined 23% into city finance as an infrastructure. So, that's kind of flipped around from what we have it here. So, yeah, based on that, on that exercise, I would like to see at least some of the $22 million in city finance as an infrastructure shifted to economic development. I think we, if we consider inclusive and equitable recovery kind of package together with social services there, we're still down percentage-wise from our fourth ward exercise. So, I'd like to see some of that $22 million moved in that direction as well, either into social services or inclusive and equitable recovery. We also talked about not wanting to use ARPA money to pay for things where there are other funding sources available. Thinking specifically about lead pipe replacement, as important as that is, going forward over the next 30 years, it is not unrealistic to expect that there may be, I hope I've couched that with enough wiggle room, that there may be additional sources of funding available from the state or from the federal government to replace lead services. So, I would want to think deeply about investing ARPA money in something like that. Looking at the economic development segment here, I think that's a good process. Who are we anticipating would put together the scoring system, and who would do that scoring? Is that, are you assigning that responsibility to the Economic Development Committee?
The suggestion would be that the staff would take input from the Economic Development Committee to devise the tool with which we would use to score the projects, and the Economic Development Committee would then sign off on that tool as to what they would endorse for the staff to then use to go back and score the project.
So, the staff, staff members would be doing the scoring based on a system approved by the committee?
Yes.
Similar for the social services bucket then as well?
Yes.
Okay. Then I had a question about the, in the city finances and infrastructure section, the revenue deficit. We're projecting $10.3 million in general fund losses and some $4 million in the parking fund. Is that a gross revenue loss, or is that net? Because I do know that we came in over budget on some line items. Help me with the language, it's getting late here. We, we lost money in some places.
Gross versus net is clear.
We made more money in, in other places. So, is this a gross or a, a net, a net number?
I would have to ask Hitesh to answer that question. I believe he's on the Zoom call.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. It is the overall number. The calculation is, we compare this with our base year, which was 2019, so we took all the revenues of 2019, and we get 4.1% increase to that, and then we compare it with the 2020, so it's the overall revenue. You can pick and choose.
Thank you, Hitesh.
Thank you. Under the inclusive and equitable recovery, yeah, I will have questions moving forward about what that process looks like, what the criteria will be, who will be making those decisions. And I think that does it for me right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I was just going to add one more thing. Maybe we should potentially rename the city infrastructure and finances category as city infrastructure finances and miscellaneous, because I do want to help the council have some flexibility in that bucket. If we allocate more money, let's say, to economic development now, then we're committed to spending that, versus if we start out with what's been proposed, see how many proposals we get, and then fund those, and then if the council deems that there are more proposals that they feel worthy of getting funded, then you could come back and allocate more funding. But if we allocate the funding now, then we're, we're wedded to it, and we can't go back. So, sort of what we proposed is a, a structure of guidelines that is offering some level of flexibility to understand the landscape and to get a start, but then offering the ability to then endorse certain things down the road that the council sees fit as we move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Ravel.
So, City Manager, you mentioned that, that the city would be aiding some of our social service agencies in applying for other, other kinds of federal funds, or, could, could you just describe, so when, when are those kinds of funds going to be available?
My understanding is those funds are already becoming available, and we have, you know, some staff available to assist, certainly not as much as we would like, but we have been communicating with the nonprofit agencies and trying to understand what their level of capability is within their own staff to try to secure this funding on their own, and what level of assistance they may need from the city to help secure this funding.
Okay.
But that may be something that I would come to the City Council and suggest at some point in time down the road, is, it may be smart for us to allocate some of this funding for some staff person or vendor to assist our nonprofit communities in securing their own funding. That may be a proposal that we come forward with.
Yeah, no, that would be a good idea. And I guess I just want to go back and second Councilmember Fleming's suggestion that we, you know, certainly give serious consideration to more funding for the social services, and I'm going to highlight mental health, because we've been hearing just a tremendous need for mental health services for residents of all ages in our community, and so I want us to be, have the capacity to, to meet that serious need in the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Burns.
I am looking to see how we are going, going to target communities, individuals who, who faced hardship before COVID. I mentioned that at the first meeting, and I, you know, census tract is one way to do it, I, I, you know, I think there's other ways, but census tract, when you have compounded, you know, low and moderate income, you know, poverty levels, unaffordability, you know, issue with joblessness, when all of that is compounded within one area, I think for sure that negatively impacts the, at the individual level, too. It just compounds the negative quality of life outcomes for individuals living in those areas. So, I can see why census tract is used. Councilmember Reed talked about another census tract in the eighth ward. I think that's definitely something we need to, to, to look at, but if not census tract, what? Again, census tract gives us a good sense of how things are doing across a lot of different demographic outcomes, and so if we're not going to do it at that level, we're going to do it more at the individual level, how, how are we going to target people that have faced hardship? That's really important to me, because the, the ARPA information called attention to that time and time again. So, again, if not census, what? Trying to see where underground in the Comer wires can play into this, maybe not along the whole old Mayfair line, but in the fifth and, and second ward, and in areas where it's significantly impeding on our ability to create greater opportunity there. I'd love to, to see how we can work that into the ARPA money. And, you know, although there may be funds for lead pipe abatement, I'd love to see our water department create a workforce development program where we're training local residents to do that work. And so, I talked to, to City Manager Storley about this. We may need, may not need to put a ton of money into lead pipe abatement and the cost of doing the work, but can we create a workforce development program so that Evanston residents are doing every single lead pipe, pipe replacement in the city of Evanston, as well as it opens it up, them up for other opportunities, other opportunities in different cities who haven't developed this workforce? I, I don't know, Councilmember Reed, if you were talking about putting some of this money towards like housing people who are, have been evicted and are looking for emergency housing, if that was not your point, that, I would love to see that, because I do think we're going to have an increase in, in evictions, and, you know, Sarah Flash can speak to this, but I don't, I don't think we have enough units to, to support the need now, let alone if we see a, a, a big increase in eviction. So, I would love to see some money that we can use to help people find emergency housing. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, no one else is asking to speak for the first time, so Councilmember Braithwaite, you can feel free to speak again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just lifting up a couple of things, definitely, I think prioritizing mental health is, should it, should definitely be a priority. I've had a opportunity, Evanston Hospital has a new diversity inclusion person that I met with, and I know that that's on Evanston, Evanston Hospital's radar, how to be better community partners. There's a reoccurring theme, theme in terms of evictions and, and families with, without certain resources, and I would encourage Councilmember Reed to look to our GA program that's up and running right now, that has funds in it. So, if there are people who are struggling to pay their, their rent, there is assistance there to help those individuals, and if you haven't had an opportunity to meet with Indare Perkins or anyone in the Health Department, I would encourage you to do that. The other, what I wanted to talk about in terms of economic development, I hope that we're able to take advantage of tools and programs that we've used in the past that have been proven successful. I mean, we definitely have room to think outside of the box, but we have programs that we've utilized over the years. It's just been a matter of not having enough funds to do it. And so, I think that if that's going to be our priority, let's just dust off some of those things, for example, facade improvement programs. We've talked about doing internal build-outs, and for whatever reason, due to lack of budgeting, those were things, and I think the normal, you know, mission statement of economic development is like, how are we going to retain our businesses? How do we expand our current businesses? And then how do we attract businesses, particularly in those areas of our downtown and other areas where businesses have closed, and there, we've retooled our MWEBE committee, and I've, along with the new members, have put a lot of emphasis on looking at our local spend, and I think having those metrics in place gives us a great opportunity to attract the right businesses where we're actually spending money out of town. The other piece, because we talked about alternative funding, I know that there's a billion dollars at the county level, so I'm wondering if our staff is looking at that county fund as an opportunity to, to possibly partner with, whether it's the social services, one of the, the projects that, just one, and there, there are many with our social service partners. I think we've all had an opportunity to hear the YMCA's proposal, which I think is huge, because not only is it local, but it does fit and check that box for affordable housing. particularly for the males in our community. So I think that that may be a wonderful opportunity, not only to provide resources, but also to partner with Cook County as well. The other thing that I wanted to speak to really quickly, we mentioned the lead pipe plan. Myself and Councilmember Burns did meet with Director Stoneback.
And Councilmember, I just want to flag your five minutes are up.
Cool, last comment. We did meet with one of our local engineering firms, where we talked about that our staff is already making plans to train individuals to particularly take advantage of. So that's something that's happening real, real time. And we can talk about that more outside of this meeting. But those are the things that I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Reed.
I just want to also, just want to make sure, since no one's mentioned it, that I support the 2.5 million for PB. I made a referral up to 10 million, and 2.5 million is up somewhere up to 10 million. So, you know, I consider that. Thank you, City Manager Story, for taking leadership on that. I do want to make sure that if, as we're going through that, one, I would like to see that dollar amount increased. 2.5 million is a good start. I would like to see it really 5 million, but, you know, one vote here. But I do want to make sure as we move forward with that, that we have a good process. So I just maybe want to get some clarity on how we, who's going to develop the process for the PB? Is that going to be something that comes? I referred it to the Rules Committee. Is it going to go to Rules? Is it going to go to the council? What is your thought?
I think the council should direct where it would like for that process to start, whether it be Rules Committee, Human Services Committee, any number, any committee.
I would say Rules or Council, but, okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was there on the record as well. So thank you.
Thank you. I see nobody else asking to speak, so I have just three items of my own. The first is a question. This has been alluded to by a few folks, but I want to ask it directly. Obviously, the infrastructure spending being contemplated here is very, very important. That said, when it comes to lead pipes in particular, there seems to be a strong interest on the part of the federal government in providing funding. But also even beyond that, there's, you know, somewhere between zero and two significant pieces of federal legislation moving their way through the process toward passage regarding significant funding for infrastructure. How would the funds made available by those federal acts relate to what we're contemplating doing here? And how should we think about sequencing that?
Well, it's definitely, those two pieces of legislation that you're referring to, we've been tracking very closely and are, you know, anxiously awaiting what comes of a larger infrastructure bill at the federal level. Like I alluded to before, we definitely don't want to duplicate any funding sources. We want to maximize this funding to the greatest extent and invest it, not spend it. So we'll be looking to see what we can potentially obtain for funding through all outside sources before we would come forward with a recommendation to use any funding for uses that might be supported elsewhere. The $3 million earmarked for water spending for this year is specific to our infrastructure and not anything that would be worn by communities that we supply to. So this is how we would directly offset any water rate increase that our customers would see locally. But definitely understand what you're saying and what the goal is, and we'll be tracking that closely.
Great, thanks. My other two items are really more comments that I just wanted to have on the record, because I think they're really quite important going forward. The first is, look, it's been really great to have, you know, I've been a part of three really useful Town Hall meetings. I've done a number of roundtables with different groups, especially in the nonprofit space. I have a number additional items like that on my calendar. Those are really, really helpful, but I don't think that closes the door on our responsibility to solicit public input during the course of this process. Those have been very, very useful kind of sourcing of ideas. But I think, as Councilmember Newsma alluded to, the other big question is just how to, how to think through the trade offs, how to figure out how much to allocate to this versus how much to allocate to that. And I think, I think we'll be making a mistake if we don't act intentionally about engaging the public in that process as well. And so I want to make sure that we do that. I don't think we need to do that before a single dime goes out the door. But I do think we need to do that before we've finalized our comprehensive plan for all of this, because I think, I think the public has an expectation that not only will they throw a bunch of ideas at us, but they'll be at the table when we start to start through those ideas and enumerate priorities. The other thing I want to say is regarding the plan regarding economic development. My own view is that it's a serious mistake to structure the expenditure of the economic development money as wait for applications to come in and score them. We have an economic development manager, and we, as a city, work on economic development issues all the time. We ought to have the capacity to establish our own strategy that should guide the expenditure of perhaps a small portion, perhaps a medium proportion, perhaps even all of these funds, but that should not require us to wait for applicants to come to us. And I think we're, we're passing up a really, really unique opportunity and making a mistake if we allocate all of the economic development dollars in that fashion. So I've been advocating that we, we work with our economic development manager or our economic development committee to establish our own internal strategy that will guide proactive expenditure of at least some of those dollars. And I intend to continue advocating for that, because I think if we, if we do that, we've got a real opportunity here that doesn't come around very often. If we don't, I think we're failing to meet that moment.
I guess for specifics with what you're suggesting, I mean, I've made a point of saying we have models that we've used over the years in terms of receiving and information. And a lot of the information is based on our businesses' financials, et cetera. So if we're being proactive and we're not going to receive information, I'm just curious to know, like, what's your methodology and thought process? And?
Well, for instance, so, you know, I've been spending a lot of time talking with business leaders in town about their efforts to recruit new businesses in as there's a shuffling, right? So there's businesses that maybe had a bunch of office space in downtown Chicago that are looking to shrink that footprint and spin off a few satellite locations. For instance, maybe some of their north suburban employees don't want to get in the metro every day, but don't also want to work from their house every day. So the question is, how do you, how do you attract that kind of new business into frankly, some of our downtown office, office square footage that might be underutilized because of what happened during the pandemic? And there's specific things that we're hearing from building managers and existing businesses about improving the built environment downtown, about changing the way the train stations look and operate, about adding certain amenities downtown. There may or may not be an applicant waiting in the wings to do that work, but that work is determined based upon a lot of discussion with all the same stakeholders. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't be the case that we would necessarily wait for applicants to come in, because candidly, I think when applicants come to us, it'll be, "Help my business do X. Help me expand. Help me move in", as opposed to "help the city of Evanston make investments in itself that will make it more attractive to a number of businesses." So that's the distinction that I'm, that I'm alluding to here. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we need to take the reins and have a process that's not inclusive. I'm saying we need to have a process that should be inclusive, but then will tell us what the strategy is. And the strategy may not be achieved by just waiting for applicants to come in. Another example that we've heard talked about several times today is this question of workforce development. I think Councilmember Burns spoke to it really, really eloquently. The state has issued a mandate that says we're going to be replacing a ton of lead service lines during the course of the next 35 years. A workforce development program that prepares us to have exclusively young Evanston residents doing that work will pay tremendous economic dividends for our community. But there may not be a vendor with an off-the-shelf program who's going to come to us with an application. We may have to work with someone proactively to develop that kind of program. And so my point isn't that I have a particular plan here. I extremely don't. My point is I think that we ought to develop our plan and not simply be a reader of applications. The city manager wants to add to this.
I just wanted to add that it's, there is an applicant waiting in the wings to develop some of that, and it's city staff. So I would imagine that in this bucket of funding, city staff would also be putting forth proposals that fit with economic development in addition to any proposals that would be coming in from the outside.
Okay, I had not, sure. That's, I mean, that, that sort of tautologically resolves the question, I suppose. Councilmember Fleming.
Just to have a quick question for clarity. So we had talked earlier some time ago about how we're going to allocate this, having a website, which I think we have, and, you know, having some kind of spreadsheet that shows how much money we're using. But what is our next community engagement piece? I think we, if we have that, we should talk about it. I mean, I just had a ward meeting, so now I won't have, you know, it won't be another month until I speak to residents again about this particular thing. But so it was community engagement, and then I do think even, I hate to use the term outside the box, but thinking about how to get more community input from that. When is this going to be on our next meeting? I know we talked about the eighth, but maybe just for public consumption, it's good to talk about what's going to happen on the eighth. And then my third question or thing I want to clarify was to the mayor's point about taking applications, you know, that we're going to have to be super savvy about how we do that, because all of our businesses weren't on the mayor's task force, all of our social service agencies weren't on the mayor's task force. So I just hate for somebody to hear about any kind of application funding option late, right? And so just thinking about how, you know, leaving that window open long enough for us to really try to get to everybody we can, and making the application in the process one that's super user-friendly and not complicated, and having staff available to answer those questions are going to be important as well.
I did want to respond to those questions, but I may have forgotten one or two of them. So you might, I might have to ask you to repeat them.
So what is our next community engagement piece? And then what's going to happen at the next meeting? Because I know you mentioned we're going to talk about this again.
Yes, so for tonight's purposes, if we get a general consensus that we're on the right track, we would seek to start the economic development and social services piece of this. That would entail creating some literature, some press releases, some website, all of the things that we'd be doing to get the word out that this is where we're starting, and this is generally the process that we're going to move forward with. Additionally, we would start having those interactions with the committees. So an economic development committee meets on Wednesday night. Depending on the outcome of this discussion tonight, that will frame the discussion that will happen on Wednesday night. And similarly, with the social services committee for their next scheduled meeting. So those will be the next things. But specifically, what will be proposed at the August 9th meeting will be the funding for those items that are recommended to be prioritized for the city finances and infrastructure piece.
Okay, and so I don't usually, you know, like this, but will, will there be a survey of some sort that people can just weigh in? I think we used to have for P and D or Plan Development, they had some kind of survey tool we were using where people could change the pie chart and all that kind of stuff. Again, I don't, I don't want it to go too far, but, you know, just having one meeting. We had three meetings before, which I think had 300 people at them.
And Councilmember Fleming, just also want to flag your time as a closer.
So just, you know, again, wanting to just kind of go past that, like we talked about at a council meeting, and so therefore you were informed.
If the council's direction was to create a survey, we could certainly do that.
Next, and sorry, I have not been giving people time warnings for their second pass, so I will in this case. Next is Councilmember Newsma, who has a minute and 20 seconds left.
At what point in this timeline do we expect that council will be approving the division of the pie?
At any point in time. If the council feels like this is roughly where we want to head, then, you know, generally, giving consensus to proceed tonight would be enough for us to get started. But at any point in time, we could have, you know, a vote on the allocations if people wanted to, like, lock that in. But what sort of we're proposing tonight is, here's what we're going to propose to start with. And as we go through the process of this and things evolve, we may come to you with a proposal to reallocate portions of it, or you may come to us with proposals to reallocate some of it. So I would probably recommend straying away from locking in too soon to give that maximum flexibility. But certainly, we can move things around as we proceed.
I do think it would be appropriate to lock in something, and maybe that involves putting more into the hold fund to allow us some future flexibility. But I, I'm hearing some comments tonight, including my own, that indicate that we might want to readjust the allocations as we see them tonight. And I do think it would be appropriate for the council to approve an allocation at some point. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. And for the record, I agree with that on both counts. Seeing no one else requesting to speak, I think we've had good feedback with at least some pretty consistent direction. So we move to the next item, which will be the consent agenda. So let me know if you would like to pull anything off of the consent agenda.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
Can I just ask one clarifying question before we move on?
Yep.
I'm certainly happy to bring this back at our next meeting for continued discussion, but I would like to get an understanding from the council if there is consensus to proceed, at least with the social services and economic development piece, or if we'd like to bring this back for further discussion at a future meeting.
Thank you for that question. I apologize. I was a little vague there. I was referring to Councilmember Newsma's idea about, at some point, we should set out what we agree about. And I do think the direction that he summarized the council is giving, kind of directionally from this proposal, that's also what I heard the council recommending. I personally have no objection at all to staff moving forward and beginning to do the work around, especially the allocation of the economic development and social service pots of money. And if anyone disagrees, I would ask you to speak up now.
Yes, I don't really disagree, but I, and again, I don't love surveys, but I am concerned that, you know, 300 people at a public meeting does not represent the voice of the people. So whatever we can do to make sure that, you know, people understand we're moving forward and that there also still is time for them to give input on other usage of funding is important to me.
Yeah, I agree very strongly with that. I, I am not signing off on checks going out the door. I'm signing off on staff continuing to do the work. But I think public input has got a, a different form of public input has got to be a part of what we do between now and when a significant amount of money goes out the door, in my opinion.
Right, but I think we just have to be mindful if we say, again, and this is both and, but if we, if we say we're moving forward with 3 million here and 5 million here, people are going to feel like you made a decision without.
No, I don't think we're saying that at all. I think we're saying, let staff work toward coming back to us with some ideas about how to spend what might become eventually 3 million here and 5 million there.
All right.
Councilmember Burns, you want to jump in here?
Yeah, quickly going to say that I think ward meetings are a good place to have these discussions, maybe, you know, at least in part. I think trying to figure out one day where everybody is available is oftentimes what government does, but it just doesn't work. I think having many different opportunities close to where you are is a good strategy. So I've had one meeting discussing ARPA, and I'll probably just add it to every, you know, agenda moving forward. So that's a suggestion. And we might also be able to put some of this on the applicants to say you need to, that could be one of the criteria, that you need to show a level of, that you've engaged the community in some way around, you know, your recommendation.
Yep. City manager?
I was just thinking, one way we could sort of marry the feedback from tonight and still proceed is if, it sounds like there's generally consensus to proceed on the process that's been laid out for allocating the two economic development and social services. And so we could put out a survey, getting feedback on the allocations as they've been presented, while we still in tandem move forward on processing of the two categories, and then come back for a more discussion about the allocation amount after we've gotten the specific survey feedback.
Since you're going to miss so many people with the survey, so I need some door-to-door. door-to-door, I need some postcards. So we can talk about it, but surveys miss, they keep missing the same people, and we're, we can't be okay with that with this.
Whether it's 3 million or 30 million in social services, you still need to get ready to analyze the applications and make the decisions. So let's not, let's not stop that process.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think we're ready to move on. I, I think the feedback has been heard, though. Public input's got to be different than what's been done so far. It can't be more surveys in another town hall in another meeting. It's got to be other mechanisms to get to people and ask them different kinds of questions than they've been asked so far. And then we have to be kind of consistently reevaluating the allocation as, as the process moves, moves forward.
Can I just say, one thing I do think we missed, and I know you're trying, but is the water bill. Everybody, almost everybody gets a water bill, and I think we missed really putting valuable information in the water bill.
All right. So it's time for the consent agenda. So who would like to pull anything off the consent agenda before I entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
I was just going to give you the list from A1, from Administrative Public Works. So item A1 is off the agenda. Item A10, and then item A13, I believe, was held over. That's correct.
So so far, I have A1, A10, and A13.
A8 and A9.
A8.
A8 and A9.
P1, Mr. Mayor.
What was that? Did you say P1?
P1, please.
All right. So far, I have A1, A8, A9, A10, A13, and P1. Anything else?
Oh, P1 was held, just to be clear. It's not off the consent, it was held in committee, just for clarity.
Well, so we won't.
It won't even.
But it's, we better not, I won't accept a motion to vote, to pass it right now, that's for sure.
Yeah, no, but I just want to be clear that it's not coming back up after we vote on the consent.
Understood. Mr. Cummings?
I just wanted to clarify that A10, A13, and I guess now P1 is, were all held in committee. Just want to make sure.
All right. So they're coming off the consent agenda. They will not be eligible for a vote tonight.
Correct.
So A1, A9, nope, A1, A8, A9, A10, A13, and P1.
H1.
And A12.
So I hear A12. Councilmember Kelly, is that correct?
Correct. And also A14 and H1.
Got it. H1.
Are we just doing A right now?
No, we're doing the entire alphabet. One thing I want to say, because I want to, I want to be respectful of every motion made in writing. Councilmember Reed did propose a motion to amend R2, but my understanding is he's withdrawing that, so it's not being ignored. It's just been withdrawn. Is that correct, councilmember?
Correct. And, but I would still like to pull R2 off.
Ah, well, never mind then.
But not for that. Yeah.
Understood. Oh, someone's hand is raised, but all it says is councilmember dot, dot, dot on the screen, which is a really amazing trick that you pulled on us. Councilmember Kelly, do you have another item to pull off?
I apologize, Senator. I just forgot to take my hand down.
Okay. So let me read what I have. It's A1, A8, A9, A10, A12, A13, A14, P1, H1, and R2. Is there anything else to be pulled off the consent agenda? Going once, going twice. Is there anything left on the consent agenda? So I would now entertain a motion to pass the entire consent agenda with the exception of items A1, A8, A9, A10, A12, A13, A14, P1, H1, and R2.
Second.
Let's have a motion first.
Show move.
All right. Councilmember Newsma moves that we pass the consent agenda minus items A1, A8, A9, A10, A12, A13, A14, P1, H1, and R2. Councilmember Braithwaite seconds. Would the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
On a vote of nine to zero, the modified consent agenda passes. Next is item A1. Councilmember Braithwaite, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Staff recommends our city council approval for the city of Evanston payroll for the period of June 21st, 2021 through July 4th, 2021, in the dollar amount of $3,47,578.12 in bills list for the July 27th, 21, in the dollar amount of $1,693,705.93. And so this was removed because Councilman Newsma would like to recuse himself on one of the items.
Great. Is there a second to Councilmember Braithwaite's motion? Councilmember Braithwaite moves item A1. Councilmember Revelle seconds. Councilmember Newsma?
As Councilmember Braithwaite stated, I'm recusing myself. My spouse works for a division of a company, Arthur J. Gallagher, and we are spending $200 on Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services. So I just want to keep it clean.
Keeping clean you are. Seeing no other discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Abstained.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
On a vote of eight to zero, item A1 passes. Councilmember Braithwaite, would you like to make a motion on item A8?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'd like to move action, excuse me, item A8, which is for action. It's Resolution 75-R-21, authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease amendment with Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago.
Is there a second?
I'll second that and suggest we move A9 at the same time, which is Resolution 70-R.
I don't think we can do that.
They go hand in hand.
Mr. Cummings?
Under Robert's rules, you should probably just deal with them one at a time. I understand they go hand in hand, but they might have different discussion topics or things, so fair enough.
Councilmember Braithwaite moves item A8. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Councilmember Revelle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be speaking to item A8 and A9 as a package, and basically urging my colleagues to vote yes on these two resolutions. And I just want to touch on three different topics. First of all, I really want to recognize with great appreciation the huge role that Kelly Ganderzki played in the negotiations for the, for this whole agreement for the operation and management of the parking and tailgating for the 2021 season. Actually, a three-year agreement. The, the discussions began back in October of last year. They proceeded steadily, but it took Kelly basically prodding, mediating, communicating regularly to, with all the stakeholders, and I include not only Canal Shores and Northwestern, but also MWRD. She worked consistently with all three throughout the whole process. And then basically, the last three weeks suddenly got really challenging. MWRD, at the beginning of July, notified that thus that they were going to require 25% of gross revenues be paid to them rather than what the, our lease agreement talks about in terms of 20, 25% of net revenues. And then last week, they said they were going to require a minimum of $80,000. So that, you can imagine, during the negotiations between Northwestern and Canal Shores, there was a lot of back and forth to make sure, you know, from Canal Shores' point of view, they needed to make sure they were going to make at least enough revenue from this, that it would, you know, yield something for their budget. So anyway, luckily, at the very end, you know, Canal Shores and Northwestern did compromise and come to agreement, and that's the, the document that you see. The, it's the memorandum of understanding that you see before you tonight. And so I just, a huge thank you to Kelly for all her work on that. The second point I want to mention is, and this is particularly, I think, for some new people on the council, but football parking and tailgating on the golf course has been going on for well over a decade. It generates really important revenues for Canal Shores' financial viability. And, and prior to 2019, these memorandums of understanding would come to the council regularly, and we would approve them to allow Canal Shores and Northwestern to proceed with their tailgating and parking arrangement. The situation changed dramatically in 2019. In that year, Northwestern obtained approval for the football parking directly from MWRD, and Canal Shores was cut almost completely out of the picture. And then in 2020, of course, we had no football because of the pandemic. And, but anyway, so, my little notes here. But anyway, so now, so now here we are, back, back to what I would call pre-2019 normal, with Canal Shores coming to us to ask for approval of the tailgating and parking arrangement. And this really provides an important source of revenue for Canal Shores' basic expenses with a modest, perhaps a modest investment in some much-needed improvements to the course. And then the third point is, the Canal Shores really takes its responsibility to make this parking and tailgating work satisfactorily, take it very seriously. In addition to hiring paid people to handle the actual nitty-gritty of the parking, there are many Canal Shores volunteers who are on the course throughout the whole game before, and before and after to make sure that things work properly. The residents next to hole number 12 and next to hole number three, when the tailgating and parking started there, were very apprehensive before the first football season that it took place. But they were, in both cases, very satisfactory with, satisfied with the results. And I do understand the concerns of neighbors close to holes 14 and 15. It's going to be a new experience for them, but I'm confident that Canal Shores can handle it properly. And I, I'm just going to mention that the map that's in the, in the standard SOP is, needs a slight adjustment, and we'll be doing that. So thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Braithwaite?
Just a couple of quick points. Just congratulations, Oliver Revelle. I think this, to see where we were with Canal Shores several years ago, where we are now, it's, it's, it's like night and day. There have been a lot of community efforts. Ivan participated in a couple of tree chopping Saturdays. So to see the community come together to support the organization, they're financially sound. I don't think they owe any money on the water bill. And, and now this, just as a testimony to your great work. So the number of residents that were there, if that was a sample set of how the general sense is with people who live in close proximity, were all very supportive of the efforts, then congratulations for a job well done.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed?
I withdraw my, uh...
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll on item A8?
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
On a vote of eight to one, item A8 passes. Would you care to make a motion on item A9, Councilmember Braithwaite?
Mr. Mayor, members, members of the city council, I'd like to move item A9. This is also for action. Resolution 70-R-21, authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between city, Northwestern University, Canal Shores for tailgating and parking management during the Northwestern Wildcat football home games.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Councilmember Braithwaite moves item A9. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
On an eight to one vote, item A9 passes as well. Now, do I remember correctly that item A10 did not pass APW? Is that correct?
Was held.
Was, was held. So we will, we will bypass item A10 and move on to item A12. Councilmember Braithwaite, would you like to make a motion regarding item A12?
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I'd like to move item A12. This is for introduction. It's ordinance 80-0-21, authorizing the 2021 obligation bond issues.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Braithwaite moves item A12. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Braithwaite?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So my understanding of this is somewhat similar to how we pass our budget, where, you know, there's an ordinance that's needed and then specific dollar amounts. I wasn't at the last AP&amp;W meeting where this was held, but my understanding is the same. The dollar amounts have not changed for this ordinance or the language, but there were some substitutions in capital projects that, I don't know if Director Stonebeck is, is here or anybody that wants to speak to that, but this is item, the item is for introduction this evening in front of us, and then it will have to come back for action at a subsequent council meeting.
Thank you. Did anyone from staff want to?
Thank you, Mayor Biss. I was just going to note that staff does have a brief presentation available, just highlighting high-level overview of this, but if there's no interest in that, we can move on. Just one thing that I did want to mention that I feel like sort of was lost during discussion, APW committee, when this was initially discussed, was that we are borrowing less this year than we are actually retiring in bonds we're paying off from 20 years ago. So this issue, hence, will not increase the overall debt that the city carries, but will decrease the amount of debt that the city carries. So that is a very good thing. That is the goal that we are trying to get to, is to lower the amount of debt that the city currently carries.
And that savings is projected $500,000. I probably should have called that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly?
Okay. So, you know, I'm glad to see that the $700,000, it was pretty much associated with engineering salaries, was removed along with the library, about a half a million in the library funds. However, we really need to look to keep, you know, our, our debts to a minimum. And I have a lot of questions about this still that have not been answered. So I'm going to just start asking some questions, and Mayor Biss just cut me off when my time's up. So, you know, again, I mean, it's, this is about fiscal discipline, and I'm concerned that there's a lot of expenditures here. We haven't first, we haven't even really analyzed what from the ARPA funds might, could possibly be covered. And as Tetch mentioned last time, as you said last time, if this is considered by the ARPA funds.
Wait, everyone's, sorry. Your, your time's paused. Sorry about that. There was some, some cross-talk here. What was your question, Councilmember Braithwaite?
Just trying to get what page, what, what page are you reading from, just like?
I-27 has the list of capital projects.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Yeah. So I just was saying, things like, you know, I just wonder, there's many projects like, you know, Green Bay Road, Howard Street, Main Street. I have a question about the Central Street Bridge construction, you know, how much of this could actually be covered somewhere else? Again, we want to avoid debt. Debt is expensive, and it goes on for, you know, probably the next 20 years. I'd like to know, what are the Oakden Street improvement Phase II engineering services? What does that refer to, and why is this necessary right now? And bridge inspection, is this a staff inspection? Are we bringing outside people in? Why, I mean, why is that on there? General, and what is general Phase I engineering? This is just not clear. Like, in pavement marking, that sounds like regular maintenance type thing. We should not have regular maintenance on bonding out. Same thing with street patching program. That's like, that's something that we do regularly. That should be part of our annual budget. Street rejuvenation, can you talk to us about what that even means? And, you know, like 50/50 sidewalk improvements, again, that sounds to me like routine maintenance. And again, traffic calming, bicycle, pedestrian improvements, please explain that to us. And then, again, we have And then, again, we have the Beck Park Expansion Phase One Planning that says in-house. And again, it sounds to me, in-house feels like we're talking about, you're going to have to explain that? Again, in-house, just like you removed the last $700,000, and I questioned in-house spending, meaning usually, you know, staff that's already being paid. The Dog Park Planning and Design, that's also listed as in-house. Again, what does that refer to? Staff that's being paid? Love Lake Park Repairs, sounds like maintenance. Mason Park, again, in-house, that doesn't sound to me like that should be, that that should be part of a bonding. The McCullough Park, that was, last I looked, that said 22. So why are we, you know, why are we funding that now? And also with the, so what happened too, I think it's really important to point out, and then I realized I might be getting to the end, but, you know, $700,000 was swapped out. It's, it was, you know, I think Laura Biggs said, oh, it was, you know, staff time that might lead to a capital project, meaning the, the animal shelter. And now, instead of saying $700,000 in, in-house services, now it just says like animal shelter, and that is scheduled for '22. So it just looks like we're playing kind of a little bit of a shell game here. At any rate, I can go on and on, I have many, many questions about these, this bond. The animal shelter, again, this was added in lieu of, it was just like you swapped one thing out from another, we reduce, it's like you're just keeping, we're just keeping the, the debt ceiling the same, you know, so we reduce that, but, you know, it's just like you're just trying to maintain the same size of the bond. And this is, this is a problem. I mean, that's great that we're reducing it, but it doesn't mean we should be carrying on this way. And so I do have many concerns, I don't think we should be passing this bond. Of course, refi, if it actually does save us money over the long run only, should we refi? And I'm all about refinancing at a lower rate, but again, let's just make sure over the long haul, it is going to save us money. I also have questions about, like, the HVAC, the levy on the water, can that be covered with ARPA? The Civic Center Planning Design Services for $700,000, no, I'm sorry, $200,000, what is that about? We haven't yet voted, I mean, what does that mean, the designs, design, design, Civic Center Planning and Design? Someone should, $200,000 for that. What is that about? Lovelace Park Fieldhouse Roofing, again.
Council member, that, that is the end of your five. Obviously, feel free to wrap up, but, but that's your five minutes.
Okay, all right. Okay. And again, the in-house engineering decreased by $700,000, and we just switched it out for $700,000 for an animal shelter that is scheduled for next year. So, you know, we went ahead and proceeded with McCullough Park without passing bonding, we shouldn't be now passing, I mean, without passing the funding, we don't need to be spending $700,000 now for a project in '22 for the animal shelter. So, at any rate, I'd like to, I'd like to amend this so that this can go actually to the, I'd rather see this go to our Finance and Budget Committee for greater scrutiny so that we can really see where we can save, and also consider what aspects of this can be covered by ARPA. So I guess that was amendment.
Referral.
Sorry, what, what did you say at the end there, council member?
I'm not sure if I did this right, but I, you know, I want to amend this to go to our Finance and Budget Committee, to be approved by the committee that will be scrutinizing our finances.
So you, you want to, you want to move to refer this to the Finance and Budget Committee?
That's what I want to do.
One second. Oh, that's a good point. I'm sorry, the, the, there's already a motion on the table, so you'd have to, what you'd have to do is move to table the current motion in order for it to be in order to refer this somewhere else.
Okay.
Hold on, one, one second, council member Braithwaite?
So it's more of a point of information, and, you know, Director Stonebeck informed us at our meeting that, and, and I don't want to misrepresent what he said, it sounded like there were some elements of this that are being spent now. Did I miss, am I misrepresenting, or am I misrepresenting that?
I would ask.
Councilmember Braithwaite, this is Laura Biggs, I'm the city engineer.
Hey, Laura.
I just wanted to provide a point of clarification.
Thank you.
Is that, when the budget is adopted, it starts the clock on some of the spending of the projects that are being paid for by the general obligation bond. So in February, the city council passed a resolution that allowed us to spend bond money, although the bonds were not actually sold yet. And that's something that happens every year on an annual basis. Approximately 66% of the general obligation bond is actually committed to awarded projects at the moment. That money would either need to be made up, or we would have to stop those projects.
Laura, can you, why don't you go ahead and identify? So for example, you know, allocating now $700,000, doing a switcheroo on the animal shelter from what was staff time to now a capital project, when you said was going to lead to it, that's not scheduled until next year. We've already broken ground on McCullough Park, a million-dollar project, that hasn't been approved yet. So do you want to go through the 66% of the items that, that you're suggesting that have already been pre-approved, the financing for these?
I do.
Or do you want to come back? I just don't, I think this is not the way to do this.
So let me, let me jump into direct, let me, let me just jump in for a second, council member, to direct traffic. So I, I think the questions you asked are important and deserve an answer. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to be overly aggressive, but your five minutes are up, so, you know, you can ask a really, really quick follow-up, but let's, let's let Ms. Biggs reply, and I think council member Braithwaite had one last quick thing.
Yes, I did, I did.
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Laura, I'll, I'll yield. I just had a one last statement when you're finished with the.
I just, I just wanted to clarify about the animal shelter. So after the budget was adopted, the city of Evanston received the notice of the Cook County grant and worked to determine how to best partner with Cook County and the Evanston Animal Shelter Association. And it was ultimately determined and adopted as part of an agreement with Cook County that the city council approved, that the city of Evanston would proceed with the project, and that we would basically be required as the city to put in one and a half to $3 million, depending on the cost of the final project. And then staff committed to coming back with a concept design that, and would set the final budget for the project.
Laura, can you provide the document that says that we had to commit to spending that much money of our own? I don't think that's accurate.
Okay, I will be, I don't have it in my hands this exact second, but I'll be happy to.
And I'm making the point again, that we broke ground on this McCullough Park, this one's scheduled for '22, we don't need to take out $700,000 now in bond for this project that's scheduled for '22, anyway.
The construction for the animal shelter project is scheduled for '22, but the design and the planning actually take place ahead of that number. And so we, we're planning on spending money to fund the animal shelter out of the cash balance of the capital improvement fund, because we didn't have it in the adopted budget.
We don't have $2 million.
My apologies, please.
No, no, why don't you go ahead, Ms. Biggs?
We would need to proceed with the planning and the design now to keep to the schedule that we agreed to with Cook County. And we plan to take that out of the cash balance of the capital improvement fund, because we've closed out some projects in 2017 that had some savings over what was awarded in the contracts, and hope to pay for that. Now, the bond council made us aware that it was not a good practice to be bonding our salaries, although this is a practice we've used in the past. So we decided, in order to comply with the bond council and the arguments and discussion that council member Kelly had previously presented, we would then pay for, this year at least, because it's not budgeted in the general fund, those salaries out of the same proceeds I just described that would pay for the animal shelter, but then it leaves the animal shelter unfunded for this year.
Thank you.
And that's why we made a swap.
All right, thank you. So, so we're going to, a little more traffic direction, or sort of description of the traffic. Mr. Cummings has corrected me about the procedure, a motion to refer is in fact subsidiary, so it is in order. So council member Kelly's motion, initial motion to refer was in order, I stand corrected. Is there a second to that motion?
I, I think I had a comment that I just wanted to make, and it's an order of clarification prior to her referral, as I was making a statement.
So this, this will be, I'll give you another one, but this will be your last comment on this issue. Go ahead, council member.
So I, I think that council member Kelly raises a really, you know, good questions. And for those that have not been through the capital improvement process.
Point of.
It takes years for a project to come in. And so these items that you see before you didn't come from nowhere, these are all projects that we've discussed over the years. These are all projects that we've inherited, both from current council members as well as past council members, of projects that have been discussed at ward meetings citywide, and that's how they come into our capital improvement process. The other thing that I would encourage you to do, council member Kelly, because you have so many questions, is, A, understand the process, and then secondly, have staff explain the various funding tools that help us to get there. And that's where and why I asked Laura to explain it.
So may I respond to that now? I have a motion on the table.
I, I guess I'll finish up by saying, like, the questions are not going to be answered from this council floor, and it takes some time while this is in introduction phase.
I appreciate, I appreciate that from both of you. Ken, is there a second to council member Kelly's motion, first of all?
I will second her motion.
So council member Reed seconds the motion. So the motion, the next, the motion currently on the floor is the motion to refer item A12 to the Finance and Budget Committee. The next two speakers are council member Reed, followed by Nusma.
Thank you, Mayor Biss. Well, my goal here is, I, I do remember Hitesh, our CFO, mentioning some time sensitivity relating to some of this. I think there is, while I am supportive of sending the new dollar amount to the Finance and Budget Committee, I, I do think it makes sense to move forward with the refinancing of bonds. And so I, I think it would make sense to move forward with refinancing of bonds, since that, I would believe, is fairly non-controversial. Council member Kelly can correct me if I'm wrong. And then refer the rest of the, the bond issuance for the new expenditures, the 2021 bonds for the expenditures, to the Finance and Budget Committee.
So I want to understand, was that a question of staff? Was that a?
I guess that's, council member Kelly, since you made the motion that I seconded, is that something you are fine with moving forward with the refinancing of bonds, but then holding or sending to committee the new issuances?
Yeah, that's what the assurance that, I assume the new refinances isn't just an annual savings, but are savings overall, over the life, life of the refinanced bond. Hitesh, can you confirm that? How much will be saved over the life of the bond by refinancing versus what if we had continued paying off the current bond at the rate?
Right.
What's the difference in monetary?
Sure. So good evening, mayor, members of the city council, the council member Kelly, you're right, that is the savings. And again, these are based on the preliminary numbers and continues to fluctuate depending on the market, which we don't control. The other thing is about the council member Reed's suggestion about separating two things, the new money and the refunding, and that might be hard. And I would, yeah, kind of, I have the bond council, Sharon Levy from Chapman and Cutler, and even Ms. McKenzie from our financial advisor, and they would definitely talk, but I think, yeah, I mean, we try to do both the things at the same time, to generate more savings and to expedite the process, and keep it on the kind of, what do you call, our clock, so all the parties involved here, they can devote their time, and we can kind of efficiently finish the process. So I have Sharon Levy, if you, kind of, mayor's okay, I mean, I would ask her to kind of, if she has any kind of opinion about separating two things.
Yeah, that would be fine. And if.
Can I comment on that?
I think this.
No, I just want to say, I understand the, I understand that it's important to keep it together in terms of fees and everything else, that we don't necessarily want to separate them. But I also think we're not running a risk with rates at this point, with the new unfortunate strain of the virus. I don't think we're going to, I think it's not like this is a panic mode where we have to refinance like this week.
All right, well then, we, we don't need the bond, I'll just withdraw it, that's fine.
I don't think we need to separate.
We can continue on with the original motion.
Okay. In that case, council member Nusma.
Mr. Mayor, would you mind putting me on the list? This is Melissa.
You mean to speak?
Yes.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
I'm glad we have the new, or we will have the new econo, or the Finance and Budget Committee to be able to go through next year's bond issue with a fine-tooth comb. It would be great if we could do that with this year's bond issue, or if we would have been able to do that, to do that with this year's bond issue. I guess, but my, my question to staff is, do we have enough time to go back to the drawing board and fine-tooth comb this at a committee, and still meet the, the timeline that we need to meet?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we do not have that kind of time. We've already pushed back the timeline two weeks, because this was on the agenda, the first meeting in July. We, we set up these timelines in such a way that we're coordinating with both our financial advisor and our bond council, and the necessity of continuing to pay the bills for the projects that were already approved in last year's budget. So as Laura Biggs mentioned, the, the council passed a resolution in February binding us to utilize bond proceeds to fund the projects identified, and those projects started on the premise that that resolution was passed, and that the budget was passed to fund those specific projects. So we draw down the capital improvement fund to a, a sort of bare minimum level before we borrow, so that we can achieve savings by not paying interest on bonds until the very last minute. So we've got a little bit of time, like we, we, this was held, obviously, and so now we're talking about it tonight, and we'll, you know, potentially be talking about it again in two weeks if it's passed tonight. But there isn't, you know, months that this could go to the committee that's currently being created for further vetting before, you know, the, the clock would run out and there wouldn't be any additional monies to continue to pay the bills on the projects that are currently in, in process. And Laura or Hitesh, feel free to weigh in additionally, if you feel I didn't cover everything.
So I would just state that the pot, there's approximately 20 contracts that have been awarded that utilize the general obligation bonds to date, for a total of approximately $6 million. And those include everything from the Howard Street project that's ongoing, where we have a contract with federal government and the Illinois Department of Transportation that we've committed to certain monies, and the city of Chicago has also done that, to things like the Lovelace Pathway Improvements Project, which has been delayed for a couple of years, while we worked to secure grant funding, which we weren't able to, but that we've told the community members for two years that we're going to do the work. But once resolution 16-r-21 was adopted, allowing us to spend against bond proceeds, we proceeded with this year's capital improvement program as it was approved in budget.
Council member Nguyen?
Yes, well, I think some of my, my questions, the points I wanted to raise have been raised. And, and the key issue I was, wanted to ask was the timeliness issue of, and of these bonds, and what would be the cost to the city if we raided? Because what I think that city engineer Biggs is saying, that when we shut down these projects, we can't just turn them back on again at some point. You have to re-stage, and the cost of the project goes up enormously each time. So I, I don't think, I agree with Alderman, council member Nusma, that for next year, the Finance and Budget Committee can take a close look and get many more of these questions answered. Council member Kelly, I know you're shaking your head.
All right, and so, because we started McCullough Park, we didn't, you know.
Let's, let's not have a.
We didn't, you know, we went ahead and brought it.
Let's not have a.
We don't have to spend $71,000 now. We have $2 million given to this.
Let's not have a back and forth here.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to finish speaking, please. And I do agree with Councilmember Braithwaite. Many of these projects, it takes several years. Most projects take at least two or three years. A park will take four years. A large park will take four years. And part of that is design, design and engineering. Construction is actually the very last portion of a lot of these projects. You know, sometimes more time is spent on the design and engineering and making sure that the specifications are correct and before the construction moves forward. And it's frustrating to people to have to wait. But that's the timeline of a lot of our, most, all of our projects. And so within doing that, you have to pay for design and engineering. I do agree that we should not be paying staff on this, but for most of our projects, we contract for the design and engineering. Our staff is not large enough to do that. So that design and engineering is part of any capital improvement project that we have ever had. So that's appropriate that that's there because that's all part of paving a road. Paving a road includes design. And so that's what we have. That's part of capital improvement. And I feel really strongly that we should not delay this any further. It will only cost us more money. And if you want to reexamine this process for next year, I would support that, but we can't delay this now. It will cost every single resident in Evanston.
Melissa, at the last one, we reduced it by 1.2 million. So why don't you think there's more in there that should come off? I mean, what's the significant money?
Councilmember Kelly, please.
There's so much on there that we don't need to spend.
This is not in order. Please.
Sorry.
This is for intro, I'll say one more thing, Mr. Mayor. This is for introduction tonight. I don't think it should be referred. We don't even have a Finance and Budget Committee staff yet. We don't know which members of the council are going to be on it yet. We're almost in August. It's very difficult to hold meetings in August. We need to move forward on this because this will, we have had this issue appear occasionally, and when the staff actually figures out how much it's going to cost, it's huge, and I can't support that. That will cost every single resident in Evanston more money for projects that are desperately needed.
Thank you. Councilmember Sufferden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it sounds like everybody said things that are true. So I guess this is more of a question or half a referral going forward, but would it be anticipated that Finance and Budget would be the committee that would handle authorization of general obligation bonds going forward rather than Administration and Public Works? Because I do hear the point about that we're asking this to be looked at by a committee that doesn't exist yet, which is problematic, but is that something that the Rules Committee should discuss?
So, under the most recent rules passed by the City Council, the last City Council meeting that adopted the Finance and Budget Committee, one of the places of jurisdiction was in fact capital projects and funding for those projects. So yes, the answer to your question is yes.
Okay. Thank you.
No one else is asking to speak for the first time, so for the second time with four minutes left on your clock, Councilmember Reed.
Four minutes. So I'll just say that the idea that we, that staff or we, the city, committed money or started projects without having the funding in line, I think, isn't the best practice. And I hope moving forward that we don't start projects and commit the city to expenditures before it's been approved by the City Council. I will also say that, you know, some of my colleagues mentioned that, you know, these projects are years old. If there's anyone who has had a ward meeting or if there's about the animal shelter, I think that's fairly new, and that's a fairly large expenditure, and that's not, from my understanding, that is not something that has been discussed at any ward meeting or really too many public meetings. And so, you know, I think it makes sense to hold this or send, refer this to the committee. It has not, it's been created, the committee exists, we adopted, oh, shucks. I guess we didn't adopt it yet.
We adopted it, and I think we're going to amend some of its specs in a few minutes.
Okay, so we did adopt it, so it exists, great. And so the committee does exist, and so it's an official committee, I think. While we haven't appointed all of the, really, any of the committee members yet, it will happen soon, and I think we can refer to that committee and get it off the ground. So I will end my comments there.
Seeing no further discussion, and just for clarity about the committee, the committee exists. It has zero members at this time. An email was sent tonight, today, indicating who, which appointees will be confirmed from among the council in two weeks, but that doesn't include the appointees who are community members, it's kind of a big part of the point of the committee, who wouldn't be able to be confirmed under our rules until the following meeting, which is in September. So the committee wouldn't be populated with the non-council members until our September meeting.
Point of information.
Yeah.
I don't want to rush your process, but is it possible to get the community members selected so they could be approved at the next meeting?
Not under our rules because the rules require two weeks' notice.
We could suspend the rules, understanding this special circumstance that we want to, but just to.
That's a, look, I don't, I have not, I've communicated with Councilmember Kelly about this today. I'm not aware of how many applicants we have yet, so that's a conversation I'll be having with staff tomorrow morning. I can't promise you that we're even going to have the right number of applicants in time to suspend the rules and confirm them two weeks from today. I do not know that.
Thank you.
So on the motion to refer this item to the Finance and Budget Committee, would the clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite.
No.
Councilmember Nguyen.
No.
Councilmember Nusma.
No.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden.
No.
Councilmember Ravel.
No.
On a vote of four in favor and five against, the motion to refer fails. Mr. Cummings, am I correct that the underlying motion is now in order? So seeing no further discussion, would the clerk call the rule on Councilmember Braithwaite's motion of A-12?
Councilmember Reed.
No.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
No.
Councilmember Braithwaite.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden.
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel.
Aye.
On a vote of seven to two, item A-12 passes. That brings us to item A-13. Am I correct that this also did not make it out of committee? Okay, so we, it was held in committee. So we move on to item A-14. Councilmember Braithwaite, would you like to make a motion regarding A-14?
Yes, and before I make the motion, can I just suggest, City Manager, that at some point prior to the budget season, that between you and with our engineering department, our Public Works, that we put on a presentation for our CIP projects and how that takes place just for everyone's education?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'd like to move item A-14, ordinance 57-0-21, amending the city code section 10-11, limited parking to add a pilot program at various lakefronts. This is for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Braithwaite moves item A-14. Councilmember Fleming seconds. Before we begin, let me ask staff, does this require an amendment, given that July 19th is now in the past? Is Mr. Rivera on the Zoom?
I believe you.
Yes, hello. Good evening, members of the City Council. Yes, we would require an amendment, and we would endorse August 1st through October 31st, 2021.
Would anyone like to email me such an amendment? We'll stand at ease for a moment while Councilmember Sufferden emails me an amendment. Ooh, and I just, sorry, Councilmember Reed, I'm behind on my email, but I think the thing that you emailed me about was, you withdrew it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry. Okay, sorry. It's a multimedia thing going on up here.
I would like us to just think about this policy of requiring every motion to be in writing, because this is a fairly small, simple change, and I don't know if everything has to be in writing.
That's fair. I just, it felt that way at the moment with the leaf blowers, I remember, and then the next morning, there was a lot of confusion, and I just, I felt that one. So Councilmember Sufferden moves to amend item A-14 to begin the pilot on August 1st rather than July 19th. Is there a second?
A second.
Councilmember Reed seconds. Seeing no discussion, would the clerk call the rule on the amendment, please?
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
No.
Councilmember Braithwaite.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
No.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden.
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel.
Aye.
On a vote of seven to two, the amendment is adopted, and the pilot would now, the pilot before us would now begin on August 1st and end on October 31st. Is there any discussion on the amended motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
No.
Councilmember Braithwaite.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
No.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden.
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel.
No.
On a vote of six to three, item A-14, as amended, passes. This brings us to item H-1. Would Councilmember Fleming like to make a motion regarding item H-1?
Sure. Item H-1 is ordinance 73-0-21, amending the city code to change restrictions on food and drink vendors at city parks and beaches, and this is for action.
Councilmember Fleming moves passage of item H-1. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Ooh, just under the wire. Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I previously stated, I am not opposed to having food options available at the beach. I do think this type of change to business as usual in the city and at the lakefront merits more public engagement than we've had the time yet to give it this season. So I am thinking about proposing that we have, I guess it would be a referral to the Parks and Recreation Committee to investigate this issue and take public engagement into account and come back to us with some recommendations for how we can best accommodate food and drink vendors at the beachfront and possibly parks next year. I'll, at this point, stop short of making that a referral, open to hearing what other council members have to say.
Councilmember Ravel.
Well, I appreciate your suggestion, Councilmember Nusma. I was intrigued in the staff memo that it talked not only about the possibility of the food carts this summer, but also made mention of going back to issuing RFPs for concessionaires for the Lagoon Building and the Clark Street Beach Office Building. So it really is becoming a much bigger conversation, and I think, you know, asking the Parks and Rec Board to have a more comprehensive look at this issue rather than our trying to deal with it piecemeal this evening makes a lot of sense. So I would, if you'd like to make that motion, I'd support it.
Councilmember Reed.
Hey, so I'll say, this was introduced quite a while ago. This is now, this item's third time appearing at council. It went to Human Services Committee. It's gone through the process that, the current public process that we have. And it hasn't, there was no special order of business, it went through every single step that we currently have in place, and it's been actually held. Again, this is the third time this has come before council. I think at some point, we have to, at the last meeting, we got inundated with emails that said, oh, please do not put food trucks on the lakefront because the food trucks will bring pollution and noise and trash and all of these things. And so in an effort to, you know, it beat my progressive heartbeat, and I thought, all right, let's see if we can hold off on that larger change, the food trucks and the generators and all that stuff, and we can go through that longer process, but let's move forward with something. And we're not talking about building new structures on the lakefront, we're not talking about committing ourselves to anything that is permanent. What we were talking about is vendors who are likely, who are in many cases likely the folks who are, this is a very low barrier for entry as far as opening and operating a business. These are people who will have human-powered push carts, and, you know, we've seen, what I've seen from folks in our community, Councilmember Kelly had a flyer going around in her ward over the weekend that said that we don't want to turn, and excuse my language, we have kids, it's not that bad of a word, we don't want to turn our lakefront into Taco Bell hell. And to me, when I think about someone saying, we don't want to turn our lakefront into Taco Bell hell, when I think about the folks who are operating push carts here locally within the Chicagoland area, I typically think of folks who are Latino, right? That's who typically operates these push carts. And so to me, that indicates where some of this may be coming from, this exclusivity and wanting to keep things the same and exclude folks from the process. And so, you know, I think we should move forward with this. This is not a permanent change. I did not propose, nor did any council member propose for action, anything other than the food trucks and the push carts at this point. So staff, you know, staff has lots of ideas that we have the ability to either vote for or not vote for, but this is just push carts, human-powered push carts at our lakefront. And I think we should be able to move forward with this and test it and to see, you know, what some of the concerns are so we can be able to, next year, not work in purely hypothetical terms, but in real terms. And so I'm hoping that Alderman, Nusma doesn't actually make that motion and move it forward, and I hope enough of my colleagues do not support holding this. I think we should move forward with it and have the opportunity over the next few years and over the next year to make amendments to make this better. Push carts is not, is not, it's not going to be an end-of-the-world thing, so I hope we can move forward on. I also want to ensure, I spoke to Director Ogbo about this, and he agreed that it was a possibility, that hopefully, when we pass this tonight. One of the things that folks in my community asked for, the eighth ward, the lakefront doesn't belong to any particular ward, it belongs to the entire city, and folks in my community are extremely excited about this, the prospect of this. One thing I'd like to see and that I've gotten feedback from is that as we're promoting this, because we understand the culture here locally and what communities tend to, you know, operate the push carts more so, I think we want to, I want to ensure that we translate all of the documents, you know, the license, and as we advertise this and put it on the city website, translate it to Spanish as well, so it's available to the entire community. And I want to ensure in the memo, I do see that there is, it's not in the ordinance, but I do see staff is proposing that the license for the push carts would but I do see staff is proposing that the license for the push carts would be $500. That was not the license fee previously. The license fee previously is much lower than that, and so I would love to see that dollar amount, at least for the first few years, you know, for those of us who are kind of familiar with, we want to know what we have first before we start charging a lot of money for it.
Councilmember, that's your five.
All right, so I will wrap up there, but I'll wrap up there. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else was requested to speak for the first?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Wynn?
Thank you. I do want to address this issue. Councilmember Nusma, I very much appreciate your motion, or your suggestion of a motion, and I would also support it, because I do think one of the critical issues that is in the staff memo is a very clear, it's very clear that the staff is concerned about the ability to properly make sure that we have the right licensed food carts on our lakefront, and they need more time to figure this out, and they need more time to figure out what it is that we're going to sell in those food carts, and they need, they don't have enough staff to do this right now. So I do appreciate the extra time where we can actually have this studied. This has been at a number of meetings, and what I've heard over and over again is opposition to this. So I do think that, like we did with the lakefront master plan, we need to have a more thorough discussion about making a change on the lakefront. And Councilmember Reed, I appreciate that you reduced it to food carts, but I still think we need to have a better discussion of how this will work because the staff's memo is pretty clear that they don't have the staff to handle this right now, and I think we should have this go to Parks and Rec where they are very familiar with all of the parks and they can have more of an informal discussion with the public. So, Councilmember Nusma, if you make that motion, you'll have several seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else is asking to speak for the first time, so Councilmember Nusma with three minutes and 53 seconds to go.
It occurs to me that perhaps my proposed motion and the draft ordinance in front of us are not mutually exclusive. So theoretically, we could approve push carts tonight and refer the bigger question to Parks and Recreation.
As a procedural matter, they are mutually exclusive. We could entertain, we could, you could not make the motion, and we could take a vote on the initial motion, and then someone could make a referral to the Parks and Rec Board. But if you make your motion and it's seconded, then that forecloses the possibility of voting on the underlying item. Does that make sense?
I got it. So am I going to make the motion? Does somebody else want to make that motion?
I thought we already made the motion to vote on this, did we not?
Yes, but, so the issue is that when a motion has been made, a motion to refer is in order. We just went through that on A12, right? So Councilmember Nusma is currently having a kind of a Hamlet moment regarding whether to make such a motion. If I'm reading his body language, I think he's hoping someone else is going to do it for him.
Unless somebody else wants to take the heat on this one.
I'm confused what we're doing.
Mr. Cummings?
So I just, there's no motion. Let's, I mean, if there's, yeah, let's just continue.
Mr. Cummings?
And that's the case, then I'll withdraw, I withhold any comment, but I was going to try and clarify some confusion for Councilmember Nusma.
So if I make my motion, that preempts H1 as?
Correct, but if your goal is to actually just make a referral to the Parks and Rec's board?
Right.
That's different. You can do that, but still pass this ordinance.
That's different.
All right, so there's been a motion and a second, right, on H1?
So, yeah, and I think there's no further, no further action, so will the clerk please call the roll on H1?
Yes. Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelly?
So, I'm sorry, are we voting on Jonathan's amended?
No. We're voting on Devon's underlying item.
H1.
We're voting on H1, Claire, whether to have food carts or not.
Okay. No.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Yes.
Councilmember Wynn?
No.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffolkan?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
No.
On a vote of six to three, item H1 passes. This brings us to item R2. Councilmember Wynn, would you like to make a motion regarding item R2? Would anyone like to make a motion regarding?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just had to find it.
Sorry.
The, this is Adoption Resolution 74R21, adopting the rules and organization of the City Council as amended July 7, 2021. The Rules Committee recommends adoption of Resolution 74R21, adopting the rules and organization of the City Council as amended July 7, 2021. I move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Council, sorry, who seconded?
I.
Okay. Councilmember Wynn moves adoption of item R2. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, my only, well, my big question about this is regarding item 9.7. I just wanted to get clarity as we're adopting this. Again, so it seems, so I'm looking at 9.7, and it says, "The sole duty of this committee shall be to consider referrals made by the mayor, a councilmember, or the city manager." As I've watched the last few referrals committee, as I've watched the last few referrals committee meetings, there hasn't been a discussion about referrals made by the city manager. And so, and by the city manager, we mean city staff. And so I would really like the committee to ensure that they're following the guidance that we gave them and include referrals from the city manager and, by extension, city staff. One thing I'd like clarity on is, it says, city, the mayor, the city council, or the city manager, so if, if, a citizen committee, so let's say the environment board that Alderman Nusma used to serve on, which I think is completely staffed by, or completely filled by residents, if those residents from the environment board make a referral, do those referrals go to this committee? It seems as though, as the language is written, it wouldn't. So an unelected member of a committee has a straighter shot to introduce something than a councilmember. Can I get clarity on that from someone, whoever wants to?
Sure, I'll speak to that. I think, I think the idea would be that the referrals committee would sometimes refer items to boards, committees, and commissions that are populated entirely by residents. And as you put it in your initial point, which is, I think, very well-taken and totally, totally fair, that staff recommendations wouldn't just go straight to, for instance, the environment board, they'd go to the referrals committee, which might send them, in some instances, to the environment board. You make a fair point that the chair of the environment board can put a, sort of circumvent this whole process by putting something on the agenda, and then the environment board, as I recall, is effectively a subcommittee of the Human Services Committee, and it goes straight to Human Services. If we feel like that's a problem, that somehow, you know, people are cutting in line ahead of the elected officials by utilizing boards, committees, and commissions, and they're sort of introductory in power, I think it's a perfectly appropriate thing to kind of add to, to clarify, for instance, 9.7 or another item, but that doesn't strike me as an actual, real-life problem at this time.
Well, the, to me, the real-life problem is that at any point, you know, I as, or any of us as elected officers of the city cannot make a referral without it going to the referrals committee, and it gets slowed down and scored, and there's this whole process, but, you know, a wonderful citizen who has volunteered their time, you know, without pay, similar to us, could just make a referral, and it would go straight to committee. And so I think, you know, one, I want to make sure that we're including the city manager referrals, and I want to make sure that we, as it is written, because it's very clear that city staff referrals should go through this process, and they're not, there isn't even a spreadsheet of those referrals. So, I'll, say it again? Sure, you can answer my question.
Councilmember Revel?
I still have one more question after that, but go ahead.
All right, so to the referrals committee, so no citizen is making a referral directly to council, so all our boards and commissions have a city staff liaison, at least, they, you know, there's a staff. When I was on the mental health board, we had a staff. So while the staff would then be the one who, on behalf of that committee, makes that referral. And so to your point, the staff, so as we are, you and I, the staff, not staff, you and I are the councilpeople, and there is a staff for equity empowerment, I just yesterday put in the referral committee, I mean, the referral spreadsheet, a referral for, about equity and empowerment that they had a request for. So I did that on their behalf, so it will now go through our process, and they are in the queue at the bottom of the line with whatever else came in. But to your point about that, so the staff member could do that, so Kimberly, in this case, Kimberly Richardson could do that, that would go, I assume, the way that the referrals go there, she would get it to the city manager's office or someone, and you're right, we are supposed to be getting those referrals in our committee. So they would then be in the pot of referrals we're getting from the city manager's office, which we have not gotten yet, which I spoke to the mayor about this morning, and hopefully we should be getting at our next meeting, which is August 8th or 5th or whenever it is. So you are correct. So no, I don't, I don't foresee, and if you did, so if I, you know, I'm currently the chair of Human Services, if Mental Health Board did come to me with something, I, as a councilmember, know we have a new process. So it is, it is on me then to say, okay, I need to put that in the referral spreadsheet, and that goes to referral committee so that it is on the agenda at the appropriate time. So that is, I think, a little bit of work, that if there is someone who kind of gets through the cracks, no committee member as a human, I mean, excuse me, as a citizen, is just coming straight to council. They're still going either through our staff, which we should be getting as referral committee, or they are going through their council liaison, which, as council liaisons, we all know we have a new referral process that we should be using. So that should get to the issue you're speaking of.
So, just for clarity, what we're saying is that, that if a committee member makes a referral, it counts as a staff referral. Is that the, is that how this works? Because if, you know, I just had a first meeting at the Equity Empowerment Commission, and I noticed that, and fully want to empower folks, I just want to make sure it's even across the board, there were items that were on their agenda that seemed like it was something that just the committee chose to move forward. And so I just want to be clear?
But we're not assigning things for the, we're not assigning for those committees, right? They have business they're already working on, plus that agenda was set before our referrals committee took place. So they have things that they're already working on. If they want things to come before us, or before a, you know, sitting committee of the council, whatever we call those, those need to go through referrals committee. We are not managing the committee's agendas.
Okay. And then, last question that's separate of that is, for example, today, we had a, what I think was a fruitful discussion about SP1, discussion of the ARPA funding process. And I just wonder, again, if just a clean line item that was new business should exist that would allow, again, this wasn't, that would allow just the city manager to put something on the agenda without having to go through the mayor, without having to get five-day notice, just giving new business, I think makes sense. If for some reason we really needed to hold this discussion because the agenda was packed, and whatever the case may be, we couldn't hold the discussion. Not that this is something to hold, but if there was something else that, you know, wasn't as time-sensitive and maybe was going to take up a lot of time, or something that council would like to see. So I, again, to ensure that the city manager has the ability to place something on the agenda without having to get approval from anyone and allow it to go on the agenda without, again, limiting the rights of members to hold an item, I think we should add the new I'm not going to make the motion here because I don't know if there's any difference of opinion from where we were a few weeks ago, but I just want to highlight that as something that we really need to think about, as well as the time limit thing. Again, today we saw, thank you, Mayor Bis, for keeping track of time, that folks quite regularly, and I think you're about to call time on me, were running up to their time on issues, and so I think having a clean 10 minutes where folks can?
And your time is up.
Thank you. Ask their questions and get responses from staff, and so we're not stopping the time while staff is responding, just, you get 10 minutes to ask your question, get responses. Everything, I think, would actually help the meetings move forward faster than the five-minute period where staff can speak for quite a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll on R2?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Burn, Braithwaite?
Thumbs up.
Councilmember Nusma, sorry, it's late.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffolkan?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
On a nine to zero vote, item R2 passes. This brings us to call of the wards, beginning with Councilmember Reed.
So I will have a ward meeting on this Thursday at, I believe, 7:00 PM. Let me double-check my calendar. So I'm inviting Eighth Ward residents and residents from across the city to join us and talk about various issues, including ARPA and TIF and all of the big issues that have been coming up before council, as well as local community issues. I expect to have a newsletter out, hopefully by the end of the day tomorrow, which will include what we'll be talking about at the ward meeting, as well as a link to it. It's going to be virtual, again, so I invite folks to that and hope to work with city staff to make sure that newsletter gets out tomorrow. I do want to, I do want to say that I, I just want to add my voice, we haven't had a council meeting since the revelations about what's going on at the lakefront, and I personally, well, no, I, as a councilmember of the city of Evanston, want to say I am sorry to, particularly the young ladies at our lakefront, sorry to the entire city, sorry to, sorry that we dropped the ball on this, and that we did not rectify this sooner, and I am committed to, along with my colleagues and our staff, to now try our best to rectify that situation with the independent investigation, and we will do better. You know, I will ensure that, while I'm here, that, you know, and I'm sure many of my colleagues agree with this, that we have to and will do better, so, thank you.
Councilmember Fleming?
I'll report.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Kelly, are you in the Zoom?
Sorry, now, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So I did ask a lot of questions at the last meeting about this bond that have not been answered. I will write those up, all those questions, again, and I hope that we have answers. I think it's extremely important that we exercise budgetary discipline, and I'm very concerned about many of the items that are being bonded. Thank you.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Just a quick comment to follow up from Councilman Reed. I also have had a number of conversations with responding to emails, particularly with folks in my ward, and I just want to thank them very much for sharing their insight and expertise. I'm also looking forward to the investigation. There's still so much work that needs to be done on this topic, and as I've explained in my conversations, you know, before, wanting more information, but more importantly, a lot of the conversations are around focusing on what do we do next? And so I'm committed to working with the individuals that I've had those conversations to come up with those next steps in a very meaningful way to make sure that this doesn't happen. Not only, I think it's a larger issue, there's a lot of folk. Not only, I think it's a larger issue, there's a lot of focus on the lakefront, but keep in mind, as we have all had kids who have gone through the summer youth employment program, that there are kids that work in all the various departments of our city, and I think as we work really hard to create opportunities for our young people, that we do our best to keep them safe. And so thank you all for the residents who've provided that time to give the insight and your expertise, and I look forward to working with you moving forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Wen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've had this issue of sexual harassment come before the city council, the last city council. I find it really rich, really rich, that a council member who is the subject of that sexual harassment, multiple sexual harassment claims, now is apologizing when he didn't apologize before. As someone who has dealt with sexual harassment in my career, I am just as appalled today as I was several years ago.
Point, point, I, I would like to, I would like the investigation, since we're talking about sexual harassment, I would like to expand.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I did not say anyone's name.
Well, come on, let's, don't, don't play that game.
Let's not talk over each other. Go ahead, Councilmember Wen.
I, Mr. Mayor, I've made my statement, and made my statement several years ago about this. I just find it unbelievable that a member of this city council who was, who would apologize now when he never apologized before. Councilmember Reed, now I've said it, you, you were, you were.
It was clear before.
No, no, Mr. Mr. Councilmember Reed, I cannot believe you are apologizing now. Did you apologize to the women?
Did you apologize for what happened to these young women? Why don't you apologize?
Hold on, let's.
Since you're outraged, apologize.
Let's not, let's not talk over each other. Councilmember Reed, your name was mentioned, you can absolutely respond when Councilmember Wen has finished, which I believe she has. So if we could all keep our comments, not personal, I think that would serve us well, not only for the next few minutes, but for the subsequent, perhaps, hour or more, and also the subsequent four years. Councilmember Reed?
I would like the investigation, there is a very serious allegation that was just very clearly lodged against me. I was literally the only person here who apologized, and that's a damn shame that you didn't apologize for what happened to those young women, whoever I'm speaking to. And I want to ensure, I would like to, we can discuss it in exact, but this is, that is wholly inappropriate.
Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to say thank you to the four courageous young women who have stepped forward to bring these allegations to light and force us as a city council, as a city government, to hold us accountable. And I am committed to doing that, I'm committed to doing a full investigation and, and holding ourselves accountable, because we cannot allow a culture of sexism, sexual misconduct, inappropriate behavior to flourish anywhere in the city, at the beach or otherwise. Moving on, I will have a ward meeting Tuesday night, August 3, 7:00 PM at Robert Crown. That's going to be a regular ward meeting for everybody in the 4th Ward, and anyone else who wants to attend. We're going to have another special neighborhood meeting Thursday, August 5, 6:30 at Robert Crown. This meeting is geared towards neighbors in the vicinity of Main and Maple, including residents of Albany Care. We're going to be talking about quality of life issues, public safety issues. We do have staff from Albany Care that will be in attendance at that meeting, along with other staff members and community members. Last but not least, Main Street is open for business. It's tough, it's really tough for these businesses to have to endure the chaos of a water main construction, especially coming on the heels of COVID. So please, 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 go to Main Street, buy a guitar, get some rocks, get some wine, go to dinner, go to lunch, and do whatever else you can to support our businesses on Main Street.
Councilmember Burns?
No report.
Councilmember Suffertin?
No report.
Councilmember Revel?
No report.
Thank you. I, I feel compelled to say I'm a little bit troubled by what occurred a few minutes ago. I think the issue that prompted that back and forth should remind us about what's at stake when we seek to do our duty of governing this city properly. We're not all going to agree, but we have to work together for the next four years, all 11 of us, if we want to get that right, which is the duty that we owe to the young people who deserve to have a safe work environment, and to everybody else who deserves to have a government that serves them properly. And I would, and I will work hard on this in my own conduct, but I ask everybody here to avoid making our commentary regardless about, regardless of how serious our disagreements may be, personal, because we can work together with extremely serious disagreements about policy, and approach, and style, and process. We cannot work together effectively if our disagreements become personal. So I ask all of us to look inside ourselves and figure out how we can conduct ourselves in such a way as to avoid those personal disputes that will make the other critical work upon which our residents absolutely depend impossible. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Move to, I will.
Yeah, be careful with that one.
Move to adjourn to executive session.
Recede.
Recede.
Recede to executive session. Shall I read the?
Yep.
Let me get to the language, unless someone else has it. Here we go. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, real estate, and litigation. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS, 120/2A, C1, C5, C6, and C11, and are set forth as follows. Shall I continue reading?
No. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Nusma moves that we recede to executive session in the manner that he described. Councilmember Fleming seconds. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite? Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffertin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
On a vote of eight to zero, the motion carries, and the executive session will begin immediately.